I'm safe.
Making that mine.
Oh, Lord.
See, you're so sorry. Nah. But I'm gonna miss them.
Yeah. Dwayne? Tell us, tell us.
How much you need?
We're gonna take the little girl.
Oh.
Three-year-old.
Yeah. Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
There is a.
Where'd you go? Talk to someone else for once, will you?
Yeah, the four of them, they were really.
No.
Probably been around like nine. One on two, we kept saying, wake up, Grand Joe. Wake up, Grand Joe, 'cause it's dog.
You good?
Not here, not here.
It's such. Yeah. It's really great.
Oh, we've been there.
Oh, you've been, yeah. Well, he won't let me forget that.
No.
That I kept going to sleep during the. While we were all supposed to be looking at the stars. And to tell us. He would say he was going to tell us. I took my grandchildren. You know, I could do them in the night before.
I hope you're crazy, dog.
I would go, yes. Wake up, Grand Joe.
Wake up, Grand Joe. I'm only in there for the council meetings.
Yeah.
Wake up, Grand Joe.
Do that, I may need it.
So, here's my reply. I haven't answered the question.
Yeah.
Here's my reply. And take that for sent.
Well, Anna mentioned we were prepared, had lots of wicked.
Yeah.
They were prepared, so good, uh, sorry thing.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand and join us in Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as we stand before you tonight, we're thankful for every blessing. We're thankful to live in such a wonderful place. We pray that you'll be with us on the council as we make decisions that affect many, many people. In all cases, we ask your guidance. In your name we pray, amen.
I'd like to call to order our July first work session. Again, we'd like to welcome all of our citizens and guests in the audience tonight. At this point, entertain a consideration to approve the agenda. I do want to call attention to council. We have had a request from the developer to withdraw item C from the public hearings, public hearing and discussion for cases AX 2104-001, Z 2104-001, and TXT 2104-009. Applicant Ron Baggio requesting to. Zon the property General Commercial and amend the text of Canton Unified Development Code to allow a microbrewery in the G C General Commercial zoning district. He has requested to remove that from the agenda. If it's council's pleasure to do that, I would ask for a motion to do so and a vote.
Make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted to remove that item from the agenda.
If we were to take a session, can we?
Yes. Do we need an executive session?
For real estate and litigation.
Real estate and litigation, so. Any other changes, amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may put on council introduced items just to review the letter I sent earlier about the progress report from the sanitation committee.
Okay. Any others? Now, entertain a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended with the executive session for real estate and litigation.
Second.
My motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members have voted for the motion. For guests and visitors tonight, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do need to apologize.
No.
There were additional two items that I had emailed out earlier this week that we need to add to the agenda.
You did, I'm sorry, and I just, just went right through you. So, I'm sorry, you were up there, so I apologize.
No, that's my fault. There's two items under new business. The first is relative to construction management contract addendum with Atkins as it relates to the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. The second is a task order, contract change order with Clark Reeves Young also as it relates to the water pollution control plant. Both of those are discussion items only.
So, we'll add those with H and I underneath business? And Atkins was the first, Clark Patterson Young was the second one? So, I guess I need a new motion, and I, I'm sorry, I was too busy writing down all the amendment, all the revisions, so.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended with executive session for real estate and litigation.
Motion?
Okay. I'd like to give a call out to.
Was that a second? A frozen second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion again, so. So, moving on to guests and visitors. I was excited about moving forward because we do have three very special guests with us tonight, and we wanted to recognize them tonight. And I'd asked them just to come to the, to the front so we could all see them and recognize them. And we have three teachers from Hasty Elementary here tonight who've been working on their, on their specialist degree. And these three teachers came to us with an idea for, I think, a couple of little free libraries to add to the city. And we thought it was a great deal, a great idea. Mr. Tolan, Councilman Tolan especially, took the idea and ran with it. And I think we round, we wound up with how many total?
Seven.
Seven little free libraries in all of our parks throughout the city. So, these, these ladies did a great job in bringing this idea forward. And so, we have little free libraries in our parks now. Mr. Tolan worked and worked with our staff to get these done in record time, and we're all very proud of this. And I'd like to ask, I'd like to thank Mr. Tolan also for his, his, his championing this cause and, and, and working with these amazing ladies to, to get this project forward. And Mr. Tolan, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, it was, it was obviously a labor of love, and to have met Ms. Becca Brady, Ms. Bell, and Ms. Cronin was a pleasure and great individuals. You know, just the fact that they're teachers alone gets some points. But, you know, going above and beyond and really being the catalysts for this wonderful project that now both citizens, residents of Canton, and outsiders that come in to visit us can enjoy. And for many, many years, and I, I guess, I would just like to, to say publicly that you guys will always be friends of the city for many, many, many years to come. And thank you for your heartfelt contribution and, and really getting this thing kickstarted. So, thank you so much.
So, we know who you rock stars are. If you would raise your hand, Justine Becca Brady, Beth Cronin, and Christine Bell. Please give a round of applause. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. So, we will move into, we have three public hearings this evening. We will begin, we have a public hearing on the 2021 millage rate and a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. We're gonna have Mr. Peppers review both of these items with us. We will then open the public hearing for both of these items separately to be procedurally correct. And we're gonna open and close both of those hearings, and then council will discuss issues related to both of those at one time after we have both of those hearings, just to be a little bit more efficient. We, we did this this morning, and so we're learning and improving as we go. So, Mr. Peppers, would you please give a review of our millage rate and proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, so?
Good evening, thank you very much. I have a, a small presentation to give on both of these particular items. Start off with the millage rate. The millage rate is the, the factor by which property assessments are charged to property tax for the city of Canton. I've given you some historical information. Back in 1997, the millage rate was 8.5 mils. It was reduced over time. There was a slight increase during the recession of 2008, 2009. We held steady for a number of years at 6.8 mils. In 2017, the millage rate reduced down to 5.4 mils, and we have held that rate steady. The proposed millage rate for 2021 is 5.4 mils to hold in line with that. That is the lowest millage rate that the city has had since the 1960s. Little comparison, our millage rate compared to the other cities in Cherokee County, and this data includes fire services. So, our millage rate at 5.4 mils is less than all the other cities in Cherokee County. Quick review of property tax information, just for the public. We set a millage rate. The county tax assessor sets a valuation for your property, a fair market value. So, we're gonna use our good friend, Mr. James Smith, and a resident of what appears to be River Green in the pictures. If he has a fair market value of $300,000 on his home, that is multiplied by the, the taxable value rate of 40%. So, 300,000 times 40%, it's $120,000 taxable value rate. You then multiply that by the millage rate, so 120,000 times our millage rate of 5.4, gets a total tax bill with the city of Canton of $648. Here's a quick chart that basically shows what that tax rate looks like at different housing prices, housing values, with $150,000 home being just over $320 in taxes to the city and a half million dollar home going up to just over $1,000 in taxes to the city. For every $50,000 in home value, there's about $108 in increased property taxes to the city. So, a $300,000 home would pay $648 a year in property taxes to the city or just over $78 a day. And in connection with that investment, they get 24/7 police and fire protection, access to the city's park system. We have over 120 miles maintained roadways in the city, code compliance, building and safety services, community development, municipal court, Main Street Theater, and a variety of other services. On the budget side, a few of the highlights for this year. There are new personnel associated with this year's budget. We'll be adding a Housing and Residential Services Manager. We'll be adding an Economic Development and Tourism Manager. There'll be two new positions in Parks and Recreation for Maintenance, two new positions in Public Works for Street Maintenance, a new position in Team Clean Canton for sanitation at the roll-off side and around city facilities and parks. There's an additional Development Services Inspector, utilities engineer for succession planning in our utility side, and then a part-time Police Department Receptionist. Some basic information about cost of service increases. The budget calls for a 5% cost of living allowance for city employees. We did not do a COLA in last year's budget, so this catches us up over the last two-year period. There's a 5% increase in the city's side of cost for health insurance and retirement. There's no increase related to workers' compensation. There's a 5% increase for property and casualty insurance, 2% increase in natural gas cost, and a 2% increase in electrical cost. On the operational side, as I mentioned earlier, we're starting a new Housing and Residential Services Office, a new Economic Development and Tourism Office. We're moving with a new system of tasers for our police department, so we'll launch those, replacing what we already have with, with new equipment. We're transitioning from the purchase of vehicles into a capital lease program with enterprise, and so that starts with this particular budget. There's new equipment for Public Works as it relates to right-of-way and parks maintenance. We're working on a citywide transportation study, and then there's technology upgrades that are being included for the Building and Safety Services Department. Continued projects that exist in the budget. Our project that connects Heritage Park to Bowling Park with a new trail is in there. Upgrades to the old Ball Ground Sewer Project are continued in the budget. Expansion and improvements at Harmon Park, the development of the Archer Street parking deck and its solar canopy project, and then the Jones Building sale and redevelopment would also be in the budget. One of the things we tried to put together for you as well is a capital budget, looking at the projects that were identified in the city's roadmap. Just a quick guideline, we've got these eight tenants that are part of the city's roadmap, and so we've broken each one of these down into particular projects moving forward for the next three-year period. We have some specific capital funds that are associated with this budget. The first of those being the American Rescue Plan. That was adopted by the federal government back in March. It's basically funds that are being provided for a variety of projects, but there's a call out in that for funding for local governments across the United States related to pandemic recovery efforts. The city will receive about $11.4 million over the next two years associated with that fund. And then there's specific requirements in that fund as to how those should be expended. Impact fees collected is estimated to be about $4.5 million over that three-year period. Our current sales tax is projected to bring in about $15.6 million. The sales tax that would be renewed within that three-year period pending votes of, of the citizens, we'd estimate about $6 million in that particular fund. We have discussed a tax allocation district, which is a specific district where funds are generated approved properties that can be spent within that district. The initial amounts that have been brought to us by our consultant are about $25 million over that tax allocation district period of time. We've talked about a special tax district in the Riverstone area by which those particular commercial property owners would be taxed an additional millage rate to put in pedestrian improvements within that area. Hotel motel tax, we collect an 8% tax on each lodging night in the city. We estimate that tax will bring in about a million and a quarter over the next three years. Rental car tax, rental cars in the city are taxed at 3% of the total charge of the, of the rental. We estimate that to be about $240,000 to the city over that period. And then the largest of these fund sources is our bonds that we have on our water pollution control plant expansion. That's about $70 million for those water and sewer projects. I'm not going to read this screen, but it is available on our website. It just gives a little bit more information about each of those. So, under the tenet of creating great neighborhoods, which of course, our goal is to make our neighborhoods safe and inviting for everyone and make sure they're connected and well-thought-out, we are establishing an office of Housing and Residential Services. We anticipate that to be funded completely out of the American Rescue Plan Act. That individual will be working on. The next item, which is our Housing Trust Fund, which is a four-part approach to housing projects within the city of Canton. The first part of that being a home improvement or block remediation fund where we can work with homeowners who do not have the wherewithal to improve their properties but have code enforcement issues to get that work done through a loan program. First-time homebuyer assistance program to help make sure that people who want to transition out of rental housing or transition out of Canton Housing Authority properties have an opportunity for homeownership in the city. An acquisition fund that allows us the opportunity to acquire properties for improvement and put them back on the housing market. And then we've got a loan in there to the Canton Housing Authority to help with their RAD conversion or the conversion of their existing property on Ship Street into new residential units. We've included funds in there for placemaking improvements to some of our older neighborhoods. That would be through the tax allocation district. And then we're also working on some innovative housing uses for our two acres up at Laurel Canyon. That would be rental car tax. So, about celebrating the diversity of our community, of course, we want to make sure that all of our citizens feel like they are included and at the table when it comes to the community and, and projects and programs of the city. We continue to fund improvements in the Sunnyside area, exit 16. A lot of these are gonna be tax allocation. But that includes wayfinding signage in the area and pedestrian improvements, trail connections, and then a future replacement of the Canton Creek Bridge. We are using some ARPA funds to enhance our translation and community outreach services to our speaking population. We've put aside some funds for minority business assistance programs and also enhancing our city events with more culturally impactful events and programming. Under advancing regional economic success, we strive to continue to grow our economy and also meet the needs of our residents, also being a great place for people to invest from a commercial standpoint. We will be partnering with a new program with the Chamber of Commerce for our small businesses, an additional partnership with the Office of Economic Development to better stutter, study our economy and assist with expansion of existing industries and recruitment of new emerging industries. We're establishing our own Office of Economic Development and Tourism. There's funds in there for citywide marketing and outreach. We also have funds for small business support programs. We're creating an investment into cultural arts in the city with our new Cultural Arts Commission. There's funds in there for small business innovation and expansion grants. And then we've also included the possibility for acquisition of property for future economic development projects that may be the city or partnership of the city and the Cherokee Office of Economic Development. Under enhancing historic downtown Canton, our goal is to continue our efforts to make our downtown area vibrant for our community. We have set aside funds, potential funds through a tax allocation district to eliminate the overhead utilities in downtown, to partner with the existing property owners downtown to make sure that they have the wherewithal to also be a part of that utility relocation, working on downtown traffic, pedestrian, and parking improvements, and then implementing those after they've been studied. There's funds in there to continue the Archer Street parking deck and solar canopy project, funds to support the TAD and the implementation of that. We have funding for some upgrades at the Canton Theater, funding through our Main Street program to assist with programs and small business development projects downtown. And then we're gonna include additional staffing as it relates to beautification and security in the downtown area. Sustaining our natural environment, one of the things that draws people to Canton is its natural beauty, so it's up to us to make sure we take care of it. Under those particular areas, we are converting as much of our fleet as we can to alternative vehicles, and we'll be studying that and implementing that, making improvements to our water treatment plant to make our water resources the best that they can be, doing a natural resources study along the Etowah River. We've just started, we're about midway through a study on the reservoir, and so we'll be continuing that along the river, creating a contract with a certified arborist for the city, and also doing some landscape improvements to our development codes and projects around the city. Improvements to facilities, that's a specific earmarked item under the American Recovery Plan, so it's improvements to HVAC systems and the like, and then moving forward with an automated meter reading program for our water and sewer utility. On connecting citizens to parks and recreation, one of the things that our citizens always say is we love our parks, but we want the following things, and they give us a list of what they would like to see. So, we are continuing with the outdoor plyometric fitness gym at Heritage Park, improvements to Harmon Park, which include renovations to what's already there, the addition of a mini pitch soccer field, and then an overall park expansion to include future pedestrian bridges to our trail, fishing docks, and, and overall improvements to the park with additional parking and, and our road improvements. We'll be adding to our assets. We've, we've earmarked some funds that we can use for additional property acquisition to expand our park system. Again, those Riverstone pedestrian improvements, improvements to the tennis and basketball courts at Bowling Park, continuing our Etowah Heritage, our Etowah River Trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park, playground upgrades, including accessible equipment, and then an overall Parks and Recreation Master Plan. On improving our infrastructure for future demands, we continue to work on our water pollution control plan expansion. That is already underway, but we will continue that project for another three and a half years or more, probably closer to four when we're finished. Looking at purchasing additional water capacity and improving our connections with Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, working on that citywide transportation plan, improvements to State Route 140 along the Marietta Highway intersection, additional improvements on State Route 140 at Reinhardt College Parkway, certain right-of-way acquisitions to make those transportation projects possible, and continuing our pavement management plan throughout the city. And lastly, leading with excellence, we'll be working on a new internship program for the city to attract new talent into the public sector, additional funds for enhanced town hall meetings and community outreach, funding for our boards and commissions to go through training and leadership development programs. There's a one-time essential worker ad pay for existing city staff. We'll be working on realigning our retirement system, and there's also a merit contingency in our budgets to make sure that we continue to keep the best staff possible for the city. So, there's conclusions on this approach for our capital budget. It gives us the ability to complete the bulk of the projects that we had outlined over the next 15 years within a four- to five-year window. We're able to utilize those one-time funds like ARPA to get the projects done. It gives our staff the ability to plan over multiple years as opposed to a singular annual budget. We feel like it meets the needs and the requests that our residents have brought forward to us through social listening and conversations with the community. And then it also gives us a great frame of reference when we're planning future SPOLOST uses, improvements to the capital impact element as it relates to impact fees and other potential grant funding sources that may exist. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have after the public hearings.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So, again, it's, it's great to see a great crowd here tonight. I know you're all here to, to hear about our budget, so thank you for coming. So, you picked a good night. So, we do have two public hearings to, to make this official. The first one is the public hearing of the 2021 millage rate. And at this point, we will open the public hearing. We did not have anyone signed up to speak about the millage rate. So, we will close the public hearing. And we have a public hearing of the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. Again, we did not, we'll open the public hearing. We did not have anyone sign up to, to speak at the public hearing. So, we will close the public hearing. So, I assume that you guys are as pleased as we are that we're maintaining our, our 5.4 millage rate again for the fifth consecutive year and the lowest millage rate since 1962 and accomplishing all these great things. And with that, I will turn it over to council for continued discussion and questions from our public, first public hearing on these items from this morning, so. Any further discussions and questions? I also wanted to, for those of you in the audience or anyone who may be watching our stream online, the, the public hearing from this morning, if it's not already posted, will be posted, so you can refer to that as well to see what was discussed this morning if those things are not brought up tonight, so. Ms. McGrew?
Are we discussing the millage rate or both together?
We're discussing both of those, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to mess up again. I want to ask Mr. Peppers a question about fire. And I appreciate the work. This is a great budget, and I'm very pleased, I'm especially pleased about our plans for training. Thank you very, very much for. Thank you very, very much for including a generous amount of support, financial support for training for our boards and everyone on staff and on council, too. A person who lives in the county pays a mill millage rate, part of their millage rate to the county, goes for fire. For city residents, are they paying twice for fire?
So every resident of Cherokee County pays an a millage rate to Cherokee County for overall county services. That's about 5.2 mils I'm rounding. If you live in the unincorporated area, you pay an additional 3.292 mils to be part of the county's fire district. So if you're in the unincorporated area, you're paying roughly, what's that, 8.4 mils in taxes. City residents will pay the 5.2 mils to the unincorporated part of the county. That covers the sheriff's ambulance services and things like that. They pay an additional 5.4 mils to the city of Canton for city property taxes. That 5.4 mils includes what we pay to Cherokee County for fire services. Some of the other cities that receive fire services from Cherokee County have a millage rate for general operations and then add on the fire district tax. So if we go back to the, if we go back to the slide that has the comparison between Canton and the other cities. Woodstock, for instance, provides its own fire services, and their millage rate that was last adopted was 6.3 mils. In Waleska, they pay 6.63 mils, and that includes the fire district tax. In Holly Springs, they pay 7.6 mils, and that also includes the fire district tax. And in Ball Ground, they pay 8.2 mils, also including the fire district tax. So Ball Ground, you pay 8.2 mils, that includes fire services. Canton, you pay 5.4 mils, that includes fire services.
Thank you.
Other questions? Also wanted to, again, most of the comments I've gotten have been very positive and pleased that we are maintaining the the millage rate. I did get a question about a sort of fast track of our our capital projects and and special projects and and sort of how how we were considering that over the next, you know, three to four years and not considering what may happen or being, you know, planning for austerity ahead. And I just, again, wanted to make it clear, I made it this morning, that, you know, our capital projects are are that one-time project, special project that come from special funds or proprietary funds. The general fund and the budget are is really our our operating funds, you know, for the year. Those are are city funds that basically include city operations. Thirty percent of your tax dollars go to our police department. Twenty-six percent goes to fire services transferred to Cherokee County, so that's almost sixty percent there. Ten percent goes to streets for paving and maintenance, eight percents to, eight percent to our admin and our staff. So we're at seventy percent there, and the rest is your community development, building maintenance for our buildings, municipal code, parks and wrecks, four percent. You'll be happy to know, I'm sure, that not quite one percent goes to elected officials' compensation, so. But those those are for our twelve-month operating budget, which we have to plan for every year. Obviously, this year we had some special funds, recipients of ARPA funding, but we have certain items that we have to spend that on. And we we have a time period within, I think, two to three years that we have to spend that money on. So that is really not regulated by us, but as you could see in the budget, we are dedicating some of those funds to some of these capital projects. And then we also have other funds, and these are not your tax dollars, you know, such as SPOLOST, is that anyone coming to Canton from anywhere, you know, across around the world, spending money in 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 city of Canton pays the the one percent special purpose sales tax that, you know, goes to our city projects, our trails and and things of that nature. And then we have the rental car fee and the hotel motel tax and 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 our impact fee, which really is paid for by developers. So those are the funds that are doing the special projects and capital projects. So just again, to be clear that, and Mr. Peppers, again, he didn't go through it all, but there's a great little explanation of what all those special funds are. So if those are on the website, so I encourage everyone to go to the website and look at the breakdown of, you know, the 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 general fund and also the the capital fund expenditures expenditures and and funding sources. And again, we 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 have some some special funds, and we have the ARPA funds this year, SPOLOST, you know, we were concerned going in the pandemic last year that we were going to suffer from that. We actually, I think, we had increased revenues from SPOLOST, surprised us all pleasantly, and we fared well there. So we are able to to really effectively plan our operating budget and do that well, but also, as Mr. Pepper says, do do some long-term planning as well and plan over multiple years while we're also being very judicious with our operating funds, so. Again, I hope that is is clear. It's a little complicated, but we try to try to keep the documentation as simple as possible, and the overview Mr. Pepper's put together is online as well. So again, if anyone has any questions, encourage you to go to that, and of course, please ask any of any of us up here. We'd be happy to discuss those with you, and if we don't have the answers, we'll get them for you, so. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you all. So item C was withdrawn, so we will move on to our public hearing for item D. Public hearing and discussion for cases AX 2102-004, Z 2102-005, and MP 2102-006 for Old Dos Properties LLC. Applicant is requesting to annex 75.212 acres located at 560 Old Dos Lane. Zone the property PDR, plan development residential, and approved master plan for the proposed project to consist of 150 residential units, including 14 residential attached units. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is the public hearing for the annexation case, the zoning case, and the master plan case associated with the 75.212 acres located Old Dos Road. The proposal is for planned development residential. It does include 136 detached single-family homes, 14 attached residential units that would be a duplex-style fee simple. The density for the proposed project is 1.99 acres. Adjacent zoning, city park is across railroad tracks to the north, which is special use. To the south, property is on R40. Some of the property is City of Canton, some of it's unincorporated Cherokee County. To the east, actually, to the east, it's agriculture, unincorporated Cherokee County. Into the west of the subject property is City of Canton, R20 zoning. R20 is roughly half-acre lots. The R40 zoning is one-acre lots. I will be available to answer any questions that council has at the end of the public hearing after the support opposition.
Okay, thank you. I would ask, Mr. Peppers, could you briefly go over our process for public hearings for those who maybe have not attended one, so?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pepper.
Absolutely. So this is a public hearing that's related to a zoning case, and this public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, noticed to neighboring property owners under the development code via mail, and noticed the public at large via those large yellow public notice signs at the property in the case. The hearing will begin with a declaration of the mayor to open the hearing. It will also include a description of the case by staff. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant will be allowed to go first and have the first opportunity to speak. They have a total of ten minutes in in which to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of ten minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment on any opposition statements. Once all parties have spoken or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will call the hearing to a close, and at that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties and to give fairness to both sides, I'll be your timekeeper, and I will keep track of that ten-minute time. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise. Try not to duplicate your comments with those of other speakers. When you get to the podium, please give your name and address for the record before you start your comments. Address your comments to the council. We ask you that you maintain decorum at all times. The hearing process is a monologue, and council will not be addressing any of the comments during. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for these cases and ask the public, the applicant to speak in favor, I assume, and welcome.
Please don't take that time off.
Clock's ticking, come on.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks, South of the Law Firm. I'm Sam Larkin Huff, and I represent the applicant in relation to this rezoning and annexation application for you. Going to go through this quickly with ten minutes. Hopefully, I can get through it all. This is a subject property. I think you're familiar with it. It's Old Dos Road. The back of the property is the railroad track, and the back of it behind that to the north is your Etowah River and the Etowah River Park and the trail. You can actually see in this area photograph how recent it is because you see the trail actually installed in this in this picture. To the south, big, big feature is the fact that this is Old Dos Road, and that signalized intersection is being built right now. So you have signalized access that goes directly across 20 adjacent to the racetrack. That is huge. It's noted in your staff report. You can see this is your land use plan showing, in fact, Old Dos Road, how much the red, which is commercial, goes down Old Dos Road, basically to our property, anticipating the impact of that signalized intersection at Old Dos Road. When you have a signalized intersection on a state route, you want it used. The worst thing about a signalized intersection is not to use it. You've got tons of people on 20 who wish they had a way to get out with a signalized intersection. You use it when you have it. It's a public infrastructure, and it's very important to know that. As the staff went through the land use, the zonings on the property, you've got governors walk to the west, which is R20, and then you have Birchwood or, excuse me, Oak Ridge, which is R15, and that is in the city, and then adjacent properties going east where it is west. First question is, should this property be annexed into the city? I think it's a resounding yes, because who whoever, however, this property develops, one thing that you need to always remember is they will say they are proud Canton residents. They love what you've done with downtown Canton. They love coming and walking on the trails. They love the infrastructure that you built downtown to support the restaurants and the entertainment and the shopping that you have downtown. The one question is, are they proud Canton residents that don't pay Canton taxes, or are they proud Canton residents that pay Canton taxes? That's very important to understand. This is one of the comments I pulled from your staff report emphasizing that, you know, they're changing conditions. That signalized access that will go straight across to Northside Hospital is a change of circumstance that is significant in considering this annexation rezoning application. This is our our site plan. I applaud you for your roadmap that you have instituted for your city, and it forces us to really intently look at all those elements, and I'm going to try to go through them real quickly. There's some that I thought didn't even apply to apply to this case, but in further reflection, really do. Every one of them does apply, even if you initially don't think it does. One of the things I wanted to point out, this is the environmental impact. This is a 75 acres, thirty-two, the way this is developed using the PDR regulation, thirty-two acres of the 75 acres is set off as green space. After the previous plan that you've seen, you've not seen this plan because I asked the engineer to overlay it with the topographical lines and the showing the aerial underneath. And what you see is what we're doing is taking advantage of the natural topography, so we put the streets on the on the ridge lines. We preserve the creek buffers, and that's one thing that's really important to see here, is we've got great buffering with the existing community to the to the west because of the natural creek line there. So forty-seven percent of this site is outside lots that's green space. That is one of your key points in your roadmap for the city. This is just a breakdown showing the the different pods. We have three distinct pods, four distinct housing types. Do want to quickly touch on the 14 attached units. That is a requirement in your PDR requirement that we have different housing types, and your staff's opinion, we had to have not just different size. We have traditional single-family. We've got ranch homes that will appeal to seniors. We've got a larger family, single-family, so we've got one-story, two-story, and bigger two-stories. But they also require that we have a a different type being attached, so we do have 14 attached. We are not wedded to that. If anybody has a concern about that, we don't have to have them. Those are the attached ranches. They're their ranch product, but we've just attached them. So there are 14 of there those, but I do think it's important, again, going back to your your plan for the city is having vibrant neighborhoods, having three and four distinct type of housing provides, so you've got different buyers at different times in their lives with different needs, living in one community. I think that's important to do rather than the typical suburban where everyone is basically, you know, you move in with this, and then you age out, and the pool gets used right when everyone moves in with the kids, and then the pool doesn't get used later on, that kind of thing. We've got a more diverse, vibrant community. The builder is Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is America Luxury Home Builder. This will be their first project in Canton, but it will not be their first project in Cherokee County. They've got a couple of other projects going on. I encourage you to learn more about Toll Brother. They're a wonderful, wonderful company. Do a great job. One of their, this is a letter from their CEO from 2020 in emphasizing their environmental and social responsiveness. They, and this is 2020, they saved 923 acres. Again, this is going to add another 32 acres to that, 110 miles of walking and bike paths, 40,000 trees planted and and 61 parks. This is just a big picture of of their project product. And didn't want to go through a couple of things that we've agreed to, and this is a work in progress, too. One, we've met with the school board, had a great meeting with the school board. They asked for 980 something dollars per house. I didn't tell my client this, but I said, why don't we run it up to a thousand? So I don't get why we have to be talking like that. So it's a thousand per home. We were asked whether we could, initially, we were looking at a different builder and a different product, so we were really more an age affordable product. This is not that. Toll Brothers, America Luxury Builder. But we were asked if we would contribute to the city's affordable housing initiative, and so we're glad to do that, and we will agree to a 10,000 contribution. We were also asked whether we could contribute to the art project. Our best response is to give it to the city because we think y'all are best and able to use those funds in a responsible way and and the most targeted way that will affect the most people rather than trying to put art in our community that may not reach as many people as y'all can with with the program. So quickly going through your different elements of your roadmap, creating great neighborhoods. I talked on the fact that we've got multiple housing types, and that also talks about diversity of the community, advancing regional economic success. One of the things about this is providing really housing that is in close proximity to the hospital. We truly think that some of our buyers will be people who work at the hospital, some of the doctors and and professionals and nurses and such that work at the hospital will be able to literally drive across 20 to their home here, so that builds on that. Enhancing historic downtown Canton, that's the one that I thought, I don't even, that doesn't even affect me. We're not downtown. And then I thought further, because downtown has a halo effect, and it's it's also back and forth, and I'm telling you something you know innately, which is that your downtown needs people to come in and shop to keep it vibrant, so that's putting people close by. So that's how we enhance your downtown. So that's how we enhance your downtown. We also, you also need people to help pay for the infrastructure that you need to create your downtown environment that is walkable, that has the arts, that has these different elements that, that drives people. Again, going back to the, my first comment, it's whether they're proud Canton residents, what, paying taxes or not paying taxes. In this case, we'll be paying the taxes that support your downtown, that support the things that you need for your downtown. Sustaining the natural environment. We talked about 32 acres is set off as green space. Connecting citizens to parks and recreation. We are literally, and I'm not, I don't want to overstate this, there's a, there's a railroad track between us and, and that pedestrian walkway and the Etowah River. So I'm not going to say that we directly connect to it, but your long-term plans do have connectivity over that railroad track, whether it's east-west or, or however. We're right there, adjacent to it in the future. This will connect to that trail network. We, that is a wonderful thing. Improving infrastructure and future demands. This goes back to the signal and 20 and the signalized access that you, the worst thing to do is have a signal. You think about this. Signal is stopping east-west traffic. You better be stopping it for a good reason. You're stopping traffic east-west for the worst time, the worst location, close to the interstate. You better be using it. It would be a shame not to be using it. And that's going to end with the question about, I know the county, I think you might have seen, the county has, has initially told us that we needed to provide, be glad to answer any questions about potential road improvements.
So we did have three people sign up to speak. I'm not sure if any signed up to speak in, in support of this project, but if you did, you have no time left. So I will call your name, and if you did sign up to speak and support, council could vote to add some time, but I, I guess we can add some time if, I'll ask if someone did, one of these three did decide. Mr. Cannon, you did? Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Cannon, how much time do you think you would need? Okay. Would council like to?
I'm going to extend the time by five minutes.
For both sides? Second.
Okay. We have a motion to extend the time by five minutes for both sides and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, so. So we'll, we will have three, five more minutes then for those who signed up to speak and support. So Mr. Cannon? If you do do it in two to three, there would be some time reserved in rebuttal if necessary, correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is James Cannon. I reside at 124 Holly Trace Lane, Ball Ground, Georgia. I'm a native of Canton. My office has been in downtown Canton since 1993, and I own a farm that's 33 acres adjacent to the city on two sides. I mentioned at the last council meeting that this project impacts the trails that are part of the city plans, and I brought a map. Could I give a map to the council members? The, the map that I brought is Appendix A of the Canton 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And the, the area that this project is, is in the upper right-hand corner, and I've put a little sticky arrow there so you can see where it is. In the Canton roadmap, they talk about connecting citizens to parks and recreation, and it says that a healthy community should be connected with local parks through trails and sidewalks. The attorney for the developer mentioned that the builder in the last year built 110 miles of, of trails and walking paths. And in the budget, Mr. Peppers mentioned, including in the budget, funds for trails. At the top of this map, you see the Etowah River Park, which is just north of this project, and how those trails connect over through Heritage Park and are now being extended over towards Bowling Park. Future plans for, for trails show this connecting from Etowah River Park down Old Dosch Lane, Old Dosch Road, or Old Dosch Drive, whichever it is, across 20 and going down beyond Northside Cherokee Hospital. In developing this plan, Mayor Hobgood, who was mayor at the time, solved a problem of how to get projects to include this. And his proposal was that, as this is adopted as far as the 2040 plan, that as projects come to be annexed into the city, or as projects come to be rezoned, that as a condition for that rezoning or as a condition for that annexation, that proper provisions be made for this trail. This trail will eventually connect Etowah River Park all the way down to the Counties Park, Kenny Askew Park down on Univeter. So I believe this is a very important thing. I'm in favor of this project being part of the city of Canton and the annexation. I'm in favor of a residential development there. I'll defer to the council's judgment on whether this is the particular project, but I'm, I'm overall in favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, anyone else who signed up to, did they sign up to speak in favor of the project? If not, we'll move on to those who are here to speak in opposition. I have Ms. Martha Cowart. If you come forward, please, and say your name and address.
Hi. My name is Martha Cowart. I live on 249 Old Dosch Drive. I'm the first house on the road. And I apologize if I'm making comments that's already been made aware for the council, but I didn't get to come to the first meeting. I guess my, my first concern, I'm, we're, my residence and property was highly impacted by GDOT. And so the concern that I have, not for me, but for the, my neighbors on Dosch Road, we've lived on Dosch Road 53 years, my husband 75 years, is the right-of-way, which there is no acquired right-of-way on Dosch Road. There are a number of houses that's actually sitting close to the road, and an acquired needed right-of-way, whether it be 20 feet, 30 feet, or 50 feet, is going to impact these folks. These, most of these folks have been living there a long time. I can tell you from experience, acquiring right-of-way is not always fair and equitable. I'm an example of that. And so it's, a lot of these folks are older, and so that, I'm, I'm concerned about the right-of-way. I, I think the project itself is, is a great thing. More housing, people are coming into Cherokee County. We've got great schools. It's, it's not a bad thing. Getting to the project, getting to down there is, in my mind, is, is a problem. Sewage. I know the sewage is an issue. The second entrance, I've heard all kinds of rumors about, you know, it could come out on Birchwood, it could come out in, you know, any number of different, different places. And so I, you know, I, again, I, I'm not opposed to the project. I am, I am concerned about the, the way you're going to get to it, is my concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cowart. Sherrod Waits?
My name is Sherrod Waits. I live at 175 Birchwood Drive. Birchwood is in the Governor's Walk subdivision. We're cul-de-sac off to the right-hand side. My cul-de-sac has 13 lots on it. My particular lot is almost four acres. Most of the lots in there, two, three, four acre-sized lots. I butt right up to Pod C on this proposed development. The average lot size, according to the statistics here, is .24 acres. You could put 16 or 17 of these houses on my lot. I don't mean to imply that I'm better than anybody or whatever, but I paid a lot of money for that beautiful lot that we have. And I'm concerned about Pod C in particular knocking down those beautiful trees, flattening out that big, beautiful hill, and putting in, putting these houses. You know, last year, this petition was for 143 houses. This year, it's for 150. They found a way to get seven more lots in. I, I can only imagine what 22 might bring if we go that far. But that's neither here nor there. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned about particularly the Pod C. There should be some barrier difference there, some green area, something to, to, to give us some, some relief, if you will. That's my personal concern. I would like to see Pod C eliminated if possible. My other concerns is, I already feel sorry for my good friends on Dosch Road. If any of y'all are really familiar with that area, it's, it's pretty much a nightmare right now. And of course, the construction is going on. But 150 houses, my word, what is that going to do to that area there? And I know the statistic says that the density and all of that, that meets the statistics and so forth, but I, I'm still concerned about it. I'm still very concerned, and I, I think the city should be as well. And the construction, you know, changing the, the terrain and so forth. What about drainage? And there's a big drainage area down through there. I'm sure it's been addressed, but I, I would, I would hope that due diligence would be done on, you know, your part, if you will, to, to ensure that, that the development is what the city wants and what it expects. I appreciate you, you hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waits. Mr. Peppers, is there any time left for the applicant to rebut? 90 seconds?
We're quickly, Mr. Waits is just to the south, right at that bottom cul-de-sac. There is a ravine between us and him. We did talk about planting some evergreens along that southern portion of our property, but there's a creek buffer between us and him that, that's also there. We'll be glad to further discussion with him, see what, what we can do to, to provide that. But, but we are, I mean, the, the site plan in a sense of that. Going back to the road, Old Dosch Road, we met with the county after the last presentation and asked them, you know, what, what do you want us to do? What can we do? Because it's a county road that gets to this. This property is 75 acres. There's roughly 200 acres on Old Dosch Road. There's another 100 acres, 100 acres beyond our entrance. And we cannot be, this property cannot be responsible for everything. We said we could, and the city, county said, provide 20 feet of pavement, which is standard road width, and do it within the existing right-of-way. It's a challenge for us, because we have to then relocate utilities in a narrower right-of-way, but we said we can do that. And we moved forward with the zoning with that, with an email from them saying that that's what they would ask for. Today, I get an email that says, well, okay, if you do that, we want 75 homes, not 150 homes. If you want 150 homes, you have to, you know, on your south, create the 50 feet of right-of-way and, and the pavement. It's not who pays for it. It's, this property cannot bear that burden, and should not bear that burden when there's 100 acres beyond us. So we're here to help in any way on the road issues. We certainly want to do that. Glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing at this point and open up to council for discussion. Did, I'm sorry, sir, if you didn't sign up, you cannot speak, so, sorry. You can send, anyone can send emails to council and staff at this time still, at this time, between now and, and time we vote. So we're still welcome your input in that manner, but we're not allowed to accept input if you did not sign up, so. So, so anyone, questions, comments, questions for Mr. Patton? Mr. Estes?
Can we continue on the, the conversation of the Dosch Road? So unfortunately, I try to stay away from Highway 20 as much as I can these days, so I'm not as familiar with going down that hill there. This, first, let me actually take a step back and, and ask. This was pulled off a while ago because we were trying to figure out the whole, the road thing, right?
The first time the case was withdrawn, yes, it had to do with the improvements of Old Dosch Road from the end of the Georgia Department of Transportation, improvements down to the project entrance.
Okay. And so still nothing is done? This is the, kind of the letter that we got today from you, from, from Cherokee?
Well, there, in your package, you should have had an email previously from Jeff Morton, which did state that at the time of Mr. Morton's email, that the county was good with them providing a 20-foot-wide paved surface within the existing right-of-way. The county did want to see the construction plans for that and approve it before they would formally put anything in writing to the city. Then County Commission Chairman sent an email earlier today in which he expressed thoughts on behalf of the commission in which one of two options in regards to a condition of approval, in what Chairman's email indicated, that the county would not invoke annexation dispute resolution mediation process if one of the two conditions contained in his email were part of the city's approval process. That first condition was that the applicant developer acquire additional right-of-way to provide 50-foot right-of-way upgrade of Old Dosch Road, the 20-foot wide pavement with curb and gutter. The second option for condition of approval for the county to not initiate annexation dispute process would be upgrade Old Dosch Road to 20-foot wide pavement within the existing right-of-way, but reduce the number of units to one unit per acre, which basically would reduce the project proposal from the current 150 to 75 units, because there's 75 acres within the project.
So in other words, this is where they, they sue the cities, right, effectively? If, if, if we debate and don't align with their, their conditions, is it similar what they do?
They would force mediation, annexation dispute process, which is where this project was the first time, prior to it being withdrawn. The mediators, I think, had actually been selected.
Okay. So the process of acquiring right-of-way, then, is, is literally going down each, each homeowner?
Best of my recollection, I believe there's 12 properties between the end of the Georgia Department of Transportation improvement to the project entrance. And the applicant developer would have to negotiate with those 12 property owners to acquire that additional right-of-way. The county indicated that they would not be involved with that process, nor would they use condemnation rights that the county has to improve Old Dosch.
Okay. I'll come back to that. I'm going to read this while I'm sure we have, but just. I'm gonna read this while I'm sure we have, but just a couple other questions real quick. Is there a second entrance?
No, it was staff's opinion that the road down through the middle of the project was a pre-existing county-maintained road, and there are three separate pods, if you will, that empty onto that existing roadway that satisfied the city's requirements for not more than one hundred and twenty-five lots.
Okay, and then sewer?
Sewer has to be worked out. There are options that have been discussed. The applicant developer is aware that sewer capacity is not available and will not be available until 2023 at the earliest. But one of the options is to upgrade the lines inside Governor's Walk subdivision that does have issues and problems, so they could tie in that way. Another option would be install a new line across railroad tracks around and tie in on the western side of Governor's Walk. Third option is install a sanitary sewer lift station, pump up Old Dos across Highway twenty into the lift station on Canton Creek.
Just, I guess, to remind everyone on the, the dispute, annexation dispute and mediation that was initiated, last time we spoke, talked about this project, if you remember, because of the process, it hasn't changed or improved. That process was initiated, I believe, by the county before we even, we had a chance to say whether we were interested in annexing or not. So we're back basically in the same position we were. However, we do have the information from the county saying, you know, that they are not going to do the improvements to this, to this road. They are not going to do the condemnation or, you know, the right-of-way. Given very specific input as to the two things that they would do to not, you know, to not, you know, dispute that, so. So my opinion, and again, there's obviously some disagreements on the right-of-way, what exists, what is needed. I would like to ask Mr. Patton if he could, again, maybe meet with the county and decide what are the right numbers and, and what have they agreed to? I know that, I don't think they're officially meeting on this until next week, I believe. But my personal opinion is, you know, there are all these issues with the right-of-way. You know, I have, you know, no clue why we would want to annex, you know, all those issues into the city, and, and we would have to deal with those issues, you know? I know the developer has offered to deal with some of those, but if the right-of-ways, you know, cannot be acquired, you know, what, you know, again, what are we left with, you know, to go into another, you know, dispute with the county on an annexation that we may or may not have any interest in? Just, again, are we gonna waste more time, are we gonna waste developers' time? So, again, I think some of those issues exist. I think the sewer options Mr. Patton outlined, some of those are, I think all of them are quite complex, and some are more than. We had some, some significant issues with the, I think, Governor's Walk, you know, sewer issues and management.
This note from the Cherokee County staff report is, that's from Harry?
No, the staff report is from the county staff.
You said we got one from Harry?
Yes, Mr. Johnston did an email, and I sent that out to all the council members this morning. It was an attachment to an email. It detailed the option of the two conditions of approval for the county to not institute or instigate annexation dispute resolution.
And if I'm correct, I believe both the email and also the, the input from the county all says that this may be, can be made by majority vote of the commissions. They haven't voted on any of this. It's just that this, this could possibly happen. This could be their stance on it, but I think they're both, I mean, I think the one thing they do agree on is that they're not going to, to deal with the road improvements or right-of-way issues. Is that correct? Is that what your assessment?
It's indications from Chairman Johnston's email. And the email we received from Mr. Morton, who is now the county manager, a couple of months ago, indicated that the county was okay with the twenty-foot wide pavement improvement within the existing right-of-way, which is different than Chairman Johnston's email from this morning.
But is that for the, that's for the entire road? And what the applicant was saying was they don't want to be responsible for the entire road?
Well, the Old Dos improvements would begin at the project entrance and extend upwards towards Highway twenty to the point where G dot roadway improvements end. Would not be all the way to Highway twenty. It's a stretch of roadway, exactly, from the project entrance up to the end of the G dot improvements for Old Dos as part of the Highway twenty improvement project.
And then so, or reduce the number of homes to one per acre, which would be about seventy-five? And let's say the applicant was even willing to talk about that, then the roads wouldn't be improved. Who would eventually be responsible for improving it?
Well, under that option number two, the applicant developer still would be responsible to upgrade Old Dos to twenty-foot wide paving. It would be within the existing right-of-way. And they would, like I said, you know, the condition, propose seventy-five units for that option.
Well, I think this is super confusing. I can only imagine if I lived on the road.
I, I think, I think it's, someone said, it's, you got the development and, and, you know, there are some nice things about development, but between getting there, there, there are issues with the road insignificant. Ms. Wilson?
I think we probably have gone over this, but I want to be sure that my questions are answered. And I want to deal directly with, Ms. Cowart mentioned that she's already been impacted by G dot quite a bit. So if the county is asking the right-of-way to be from twenty to fifty, how is this going to impact Ms. Cowart? She has, they, I've been over there. Her yard is right on the road. So, so what, what kind of issues are we gonna have trying to get fifty feet?
Well, there are issues related to the acquisition for the fifty feet. It sort of appears to me that we have the email from Commission Chairman Johnston this morning. We have the previous email that was in the package from Mr. Morton. And those two emails are in conflict, and it might be that City Council wants to reach out to the county and get clarification, because those two emails definitely have a different tone to them.
Right. And the other question was?
And it differs, both of those emails differ from the staff report.
Yeah. And that was the report we got originally. This, the fifty-foot right-of-way just kind of cra, it's, it would be, I don't know how they could get it. I mean, maybe they know by the property, I don't know. But, but if you ride over there, you'll see there's no, there's no way unless you encroach on, from both sides. My other question has to do with Mr. Waits' comments about the encroachment of Pod C within his project. I mean, this project, Pod C encroaches into his property. Now, what kind of barrier is the applicant proposing between Pod C and Mr. Waits' property?
From the site plan, if you look and see, Pod C is at the bottom of that drawing. All of that green, that dark black line, that is a stream. There is a seventy-five-foot stream buffer in three sections, a twenty-five-foot undisturbed on either side of that, then a fifty-foot buffer, and then a seventy-five-foot section on both sides of that stream. Major portion of that hundred and fifty feet is on this project site. Some of that stream buffer does encroach across the back of Mr. Waits' lot, as well as a little bit of it encroaches on the lot adjacent to Mr. Waits. The applicant has given indications of planting a cryptomeria along the back property lines of those lots adjacent to that stream buffer to add a diff, add additional screening opportunities, if you will, for Mr. Waits and the other property owner that are on the cul-de-sac turnaround within Birchwood. They're two lots that kind of back up at the bottom of that drawing.
Right, I noticed in the county's, one of their letters to us, we've gotten several, that they are indicating that on the southern-eastern border, that the individual lots encroach or completely encompass the zoning buffer. So if the project were developed according to county regulations, there would have to be an undisturbed buffer, and it says it would be prudent to raise this as a concern for the city of Canton.
Along that eastern property boundary, the city's buffer standards does specify fifty-foot undisturbed buffer adjacent to unincorporated Cherokee County. They would have to go through a variance procedure relative to that fifty-foot buffer along that eastern property or not touch the backside of those lots inside of that fifty-foot area.
The developer would have to go through a variance?
Yes, or not disturb the back of those lots that are shown on the site plan to encroach within that fifty feet.
Thanks, thank you.
Mr. Estes?
I got a chance to read the email. Sorry, I must have sent it to delete. The, so going back, so I'm reading, it's always been a county road, and they admit they failed to maintain it effectively, right?
Well, the county hasn't done any work along Old Dos Road. They did make improvements on Old Dos Lane, which is the roadway through the middle of the proposed project site.
Okay.
That is a fifty-foot right-of-way and twenty-foot wide paved surface.
Okay. The, and then how, how does a developer acquire additional right-of-way? Because doesn't it then become the city's right-of-way?
Well, it would not, the section of Old Dos that's involved with the improvements, whether it's twenty-foot paving within the existing right-of-way or the acquisition of additional right-of-way in twenty-foot paving with curb and gutter, that would remain as a county road, because it's not adjacent to city property or anything.
So technically, though, how does, then if it, how does a developer acquire stuff? And then just, they turn it over?
They have to negotiate with the property owners and hopefully can acquire the additional property needed to meet that fifty-foot right-of-way requirement.
Yeah, as Ms. Brooks said, this is very hard to, this one's more of a technical, like makes your brain hurt kind of, kind of process. It usually is whenever Chairman Johnson is involved in this, so. All right, we'll keep looking through.
I'd like to say, I mean, I think since we do have so much discrepancy with the right-of-way and, and the, you know, we could sit here and discuss this case all night, but we don't have the, the facts and the data to discuss that. So I would like to ask Mr. Patton if we could get some, what is consensus on the county's side? What right-of-way are we discussing? You know, I know, again, I know they haven't formally voted on anything, but it seems senseless to sit here and discuss what may or may not happen or whatever. I, you know, I, I've said before, many of you heard me say that, that I believe annexation is our first question. We should start with how, how would it benefit our existing citizens? You know, that's question number one. I certainly feel, my heart goes out to the citizens on Old Dos Road because they are no man's land between, you know, the, the city on one side and the city now, I think, on, on the other side, and, and the way that area has developed and, you know, Lord knows the construction that's going on there now with G dot. And, and so I, I do feel for those citizens. And the area, you know, we've talked about, you know, unincorporated, that is becoming an island, so. But, you know, our first, you know, our first obligation at this moment, or to our citizens at this moment. But to be discussing annexation, potential annexation of, you know, a potential nightmare of right-of-way and road improvements on, you know, for a development. Number one, when we don't have the correct data, going back to that is, is to me a little bit senseless, but we need to start there, I think. But, you know, we're talking about annexation, we're talking about a master plan, and we're talking about a rezoning, so.
And I agree with the.
It was complicated enough to begin with, but when we not have, when we don't have the right data or what, you know, what are we actually discussing or debating or agreeing to or not agreeing to or, you know? Again, like the last time we discussed this, we went into, you know, mediation, and we had not agreed to anything, so. I, I don't want that whole thing to repeat again, or it's just a waste of everyone's time, so.
And if I might add, Mr. Mayor, council members, council will not make any kind of a decision tonight. This item would be on the next city council agenda, which will be July fifteenth. And if the county meets next week, as Chairman Johnston's email indicated, there could be something formal through minutes and correspondence from the county relative to the issue and that sort of thing. So there's a time before council has to consider the decision, if you will, to see what is gonna come out of the county commission meeting next week.
Correct, and I think, again, the county report we got later this afternoon said a land use objection can be made by majority vote of the board of commissioners in the event a material increase in burden upon the county, which is quantifiable and otherwise meets the requirements of the status in order for a land use objection to be considered timely. So it could be made, so. I don't know what we're, we're, I know we're not just.
That's standard language that the staff puts in all of their staff reports in regards to annexations.
Yeah, I know we're not making a decision tonight, but we're discussing hypotheticals and we're discussing different numbers and.
No, I agree, we gotta figure out the, the annexation first, and then everything else goes from there. Just trying to figure out the angle, you know, it's not clear. You know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of, kind of what I'd say, classic stuff going on here. And so we'll sit tight and kind of be able to get real input, assuming they don't go to executive session to discuss this. But, you know, we can get input on what, what the issue is, I don't know.
Mr. Carlyle?
In addition to all that, I had a few other questions. Mr. Patton, do we know what type of housing, I know there's a diversity of housing, what type of housing is in that, that southern Pod C cul-de-sac that backs up to Birchwood?
If I'm not mistaken, they indicated that was gonna be some of the mid-level housing product, which they indicated would be in the high threes, low fours. Pod A to the right is gonna be the larger homes, three to four thousand square foot homes that are gonna be in the five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar range. The lower priced would be the Pod B, which is the attached units, and some of the units behind them going towards the railroad track in which. in which, uh, those are going to be in the, the mid-three hundreds.
So the ranch that he's talking about and the duplexes are more Pod B?
Correct.
But we'd still be detached on both arms of Pod C?
Correct.
Mr. Cannon brought up the question of the, the proposed trail from the 2040 plan. Is there any plan to, for any sort of trail or connectivity through this project?
There will be, uh, sidewalks, uh, that will be, uh, installed, uh, they have, uh, talked about some, uh, trails as well.
This project that gets close to the Edouard River extension, Edouard River Trail Extension, but has, of course, the railroad track there, is the developer doing anything to solve the railroad track problem, or is it, they just butt up to it and then we have our trail on the other side, and at some point we'd have to solve that issue?
Uh, and yes, that issue, uh, will have to be resolved. Their property is adjacent to the railroad right-of-way, uh, the, uh, there is an access point out of this, uh, subject property across the railroad tracks into the city, uh, parkland. That was established, uh, for, uh, uh, temporary use for, uh, construction traffic during, uh, the installation of, uh, the multipurpose trail on that, uh, property on the north side of the railroad track, but, uh, actual, uh, uh, right-of-way easement across railroad track would have to be resolved, uh, at some point in the future.
In your opinion, what is, what would be needed to make that happen? Is that something a developer would do? Is that something the city needs to do? Is that something the railroad would even be interested in?
Well, uh, the railroad tries to, uh, deter any type of, uh, uh, crossings of, uh, their right-of-way and that sort of thing. Uh, they generally, uh, will want, uh, crossing guard, uh, notifications and things of that nature, uh, and, you know, experiences, uh, told me that with, uh, the, uh, owner of, uh, this, uh, railroad and the short line, uh, uh, they want money to cross their railroad track besides all of the, uh, signal improvements, uh, for, uh, pedestrian, uh, and/or vehicular crossing of their railroad right-of-way.
I see. I'd like to talk a little bit about Birchwood as well, because I see we've got the creek there, and I've got a scout leader in the audience who, I need to make sure I'm impressed with knowing how to read this topographical map. Important. Don't want to mess this up. You get real, where those lots are, they're on that hill, the way they have it designed now, and we're talking about a buffer, you've got the creek buffer as it is, and now we're talking about additional buffer, where they talked about planting trees. We had this issue over in River Green earlier this year. I want to make sure everybody's real clear on what it means to have an undisturbed buffer. What can be done in that undisturbed buffer to be, can, can it be clear cut? Can it be clear cut with hand tools? Can it be modified? I want, because of, I'm the neighbor, and I'm hearing here today it's an undisturbed buffer, and I think that means all the trees are going to stay in the buffer and everything's going to be safe in the buffer.
Well, not all of that stream buffer is designated as undisturbed buffer. Uh, there's twenty-five feet either side of the stream that, uh, is, uh, undisturbed buffer that would require any type of, uh, variance, uh, from, uh, the city as well as the state to do anything other than utilizing hand tools to, uh, thin or, uh, remove any type of vegetation. Uh, the state, uh, does allow, uh, someone to go into the, uh, undisturbed stream buffers with hand tools. There's even a court case, uh, in the Macon District in federal court, uh, that, uh, I found, uh, that addresses the issue about the undisturbed buffers and being able to utilize hand tools, uh, to do some thinning and that sort of thing.
I'll say also, I know we have all these other issues about annexation, the, the project itself, I like the idea of housing back there, I like the idea of the density that's going to be good for the city as it is, if we can solve the other issues. My only concern is that everywhere else in this project has a, a wide gap between the housing lot and the project and any adjacent neighbor, except for that last, that southern part of Pod C, which comes awfully close to somebody else. If the developer, if they're looking at having to reduce any number, or if they're looking to have to make any modifications, that would be the area that I would, to protect those neighbors and protect all the residents who are along there, that would be the place I'd be most concerned about.
And that, that's something that the applicant developer will have to think about, address, uh, prior to any final decision by city council.
And the last thing I want to mention, I appreciate the time, is if I understand it correctly, when we're talking about these right-of-ways, when I turn off twenty, I make my left onto Dos, onto Old Dos, right at that intersection where the signal's going to be, part of that is DOT, and DOT's right-of-way is their responsibility.
Yes.
There's then a stretch of road that is county.
Correct.
And then we will reach this project, which if annexed, then that part of the road would be city.
Yes.
And the issue we're having with this annexation is that county piece. We can't deal with the DOT piece, that's not our, that's not something we get to argue about, I don't think, is that right? Then we get to the county piece. Thank you very much, that explains it. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Could I follow up a couple on, on, on Mr. Carlin's, and, and then Ms. Schmidt will go to you? When you talk about the railroad crossing would have to be resolved, so we're talking about the resolution for the residents in this proposed development to get into the park and on the trail? By vehicle?
Well, they're not going to be.
Who would resolve and, and whose vehicle? Their vehicles or city vehicles or?
So we, we have an existing agreement for maintenance and emergency access at the crossing at the end of Old Dos Lane. It is for our public vehicles to get onto our parkland to maintain the trail or in an emergency situation. When that particular trail was being built, we heard very loudly from the residents of Governor's Walk, they did not want people to be able to park behind their neighborhood and walk directly to the trail. So we did not move forward with any connection plans if it relates back there. The city didn't own enough property for parking. It was going to be enough of an issue trying to get cars across the railroad so that there's additional parking in the flood plain as it relates to that trail, so nothing was done beyond that agreement with the railroad for that, uh, maintenance and safety crossing. At the very end of the cul-de-sac, at the end of Old Dos Lane, is the city's parcel. Uh, one of the issues, as we talk about right-of-ways, is Old Dos Lane is not paved within the right-of-way as it's shown on the plat anyways, um, and the cul-de-sac, which is shown to end on the property that's involved in this hearing, actually goes beyond that property onto the property that the city owns, so, um, there's other issues to address with the county, but at some point, if, you know, if the city did want to pursue a crossing there, then it would likely be the city pursuing that and not the developer pursuing that, because it would have to go through the city's property to begin with.
For clarity, though, we could, we would retain the, the maintenance and emergency crossing there.
We'll have that, correct.
Without the city spending a bunch of money to create some great access for that development right into the bar. Okay, thank you. And then, um, uh, Mr. Carlin mentioned the, the trail that Mr. Cannon mentioned. In order for that trail to, to, to connect there across twenty, you would have to have the, the adequate, uh, right-of-way, uh, and sidewalks on Old Dos Road, correct?
Correct.
And that would require the, the forty, fifty feet, correct?
Correct.
You couldn't get on the thirty feet, you couldn't get sidewalk on the five feet, correct?
That is correct.
So that wouldn't even be a, a possibility without the, the, uh, the right-of-way to city, to city standards, correct?
Tension of that trail, uh, uh, all the way to Univeter, uh, would have to be a joint, uh, project, uh, between the City of Canton and Cherokee County.
Right.
Major portion of the property, uh, south of State Route one forty below North Side Cherokee Hospital, uh, is in unincorporated Cherokee County.
I mean, it may connect somewhere, but I just wanted to clarify that, that if it did connect on that road, it would require the, the, the fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way, so, thank you.
And that's option one from the county. That's the, and there are two, and the two options in, in the commissioner, the chairman's email was for them to do a, the wider option and acquire that, that right-of-way, but that was just pavement curbing and drainage, that was not sidewalks.
No.
So even if we connected, it would run to the end of that neighborhood and then stop, and then the county would have to come along and decide to do sidewalks.
Ms. Schmidt, thank you for your patience.
I just had a clarification that would only matter later if all these other problems were solved, but as a condition of approval for all of this, council could condition that that creek buffer be fifty feet or seventy-five feet, is that correct, or whatever number we?
Well, uh, the stream buffer currently is three twenty-five-feet segments. The twenty-five feet adjacent to the stream is undisturbed buffer. From twenty-five feet to fifty feet does allow for, uh, a little bit of grading activity, uh, uh, the outside, uh, from fifty to seventy-five feet does allow for a grading removal of trees, but it, uh, is required to be, uh, replanted, uh, after any grading work is done.
So we can or cannot extend the undisturbed portion?
Oh, certainly, uh, city council could, uh, extend, uh, that buffer such that all seventy-five feet is undisturbed.
Thank you.
And, uh, to clarify my earlier statement, I say annexation should start with what is best for existing city residents, uh, that buffer between our existing city residents and, and Governor's Walk is, is certainly, uh, the most obvious, uh, considerations for our existing city residents. I think the other, uh, major consideration for our existing city residents is, is would they have to, you know, uh, you know, take money out of their pockets to, to pay for improvements on, on this county road and, and the road to get into this development, so, and I think maybe a third one too, of, would this development create even more traffic situation, and, and, I know they're making some improvements, but I'm not sure how much it's going to help, but, but tho- those are the ones that I see most obvious, but I think the Governor's Walk buffer there is certainly the most obvious there, uh, uh, that we're looking at for our existing city residents, so. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Patton, thanks for, for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Very, very complicated, so. So we will begin our actual work session now, so, and, uh, we will begin with a consideration to approve or minutes. You have in your packet council budget meeting draft minutes from June seventeenth, and also the council meeting draft minutes, uh, from June seventeenth. Do we have any changes, revisions, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Okay, next we have some informational items. Beginning with item A, review of May financials. You have, uh, your May financials in your packet, uh, for your information only. If you have any questions, um, Ms. Forrester is here to answer your questions. Any questions for Ms. Forrester on the May financials? Okay. Item B, upcoming public hearings. Uh, we have some, uh, reports, uh, from Mr. Patton. Again, these are just, put these on our radar, no discussion?
Yes, sir, this is information only. Uh, the first item is, uh, Case CUP two-one-zero-five-dash-zero-one-two. The property, uh, in question is ten-ten Marietta Road. The applicant, John Lloyd, is proposing, uh, to amend the previously approved CUP for this property, uh, to allow for one-hundred-and-fifty-six town home units. The previous approval was for multifamily apartments, two-hundred-and-twenty-four units. The public hearing on this case will be Thursday, August the fifth. Wednesday, August?
Yes.
Sorry about that, uh, forgot, uh, council changed that one. Uh, but, uh, like I said, uh, this is information only, uh, so the public is aware of this is coming up. Staff will present a technical report, uh, at, uh, the next city council meeting. Uh, the next item is a, uh, zoning condition amendment, uh, two-one-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-two and CUP two-one-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-one. This is at, uh, River Green. The applicant is JW Collection LLC. They're requesting to amend the zoning conditions to allow townhomes, condominiums, and eighteen-thousand square foot of retail office on property at, uh, if you will, the corner of, uh, Knox Bridge Highway and River Green Avenue. All of that property, uh, was originally shown as commercial office. Uh, they are proposing, I think it is, uh, twelve condominium units and fifty-five town home units plus, uh, eighteen-thousand square feet of office retail. Uh, the next item, again, uh, this public hearing will be, uh, on Wednesday, August the fourth. Uh, the last informational item is Case Z two-one-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-three, master plan two-one-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-four, and conditional use permit two-one-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-five. This is a property located Hospital Road. Uh, this is the old hospital, uh, property, uh, site, uh, up there. It is proposed, uh, to be a mixture of multifamily apartments and, uh, feasible townhomes. Project is proposed to have fifty townhome units and two-hundred-and-sixty apartment units. Again, this will be a public hearing on Wednesday, August the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Do you want to add? I did have a citizen comment to me recently about how much they did appreciate the new, uh, procedures on, on zoning and, and the, um, the meetings with the developer that the advance notice that it gave them, uh, an opportunity to, to find out about the, the project much earlier than they would have earlier, so I thought that was a nice, uh, compliment, so I think as we all get more used to this, uh, I think it will be, uh, a benefit for everyone, so. Any other announcements? We have our ten-minute public input. We have, uh, one citizen signed up, Mr. Thomas Weaver, thank you for your patience. You're on.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, I reside at one-thirty-one Old Marietta. Say better late than never, but, uh, here's to, here's to each of you. I'm so very grateful, and I have reviewed the agenda in length, and there is so much that's going on here, so much positive, and I would start by saying that I too count myself fortunate and am very thankful that the, uh, charter amendments that's been presented under the ordinance that's been drafted by your general counsel include my recommended change on first reading, and I also would ask that because the changes are so voluminous, if council should deem it appropriate, although it's not required under statute, maybe council might want to entertain a public hearing on that too, maybe not. Uh, there's been plenty of input over the past few, many months, and there was tons of committee input that was also made available to the public, but after seeing But after seeing the final draft of the ordinance that had been prepared and uploaded to the agenda, all the changes, it's a lot to digest in one sitting. I looked through it. I understand it. But maybe members of the public might need, need more time, maybe not. But regardless of what you decide in that, in that regard, I am very grateful that the change that I asked for is there. Also, I looked at the, uh, fee schedule that you're, uh, considering tonight on first reading for adoption on, uh, your second, uh, reading next, later this month. And, uh, there's a few little issues. I actually had a impromptu meeting with, uh, Ms. Fitz next door, and, uh, her and I had a discussion, um, about some of the things. And I'm going to prepare a letter to submit to each of yourselves. I understand, um, that that's a separate, yet equal branch of government or judicial branch, but there's just a few little things on the municipal court fine schedule or fee schedule, um, that I would like to have addressed, by council if appropriate. And I'll, I'll put my thoughts in writing. I don't want to share any of that with no time to digest that and make that argument succinct and coincide to the best of my ability. And lastly, um, I was listening, uh, very attentively to what Mr. Peppers was sharing about some of the improvements down there, uh, in my part of town. And it's just more, uh, more rays of sunshine, because I too will keep on the sunny side throughout the remainder of the summer. And I look forward to all of the potential improvements, uh, that have been recommended, uh, under your tentative budget. But I'm going to look further and dig through the numbers on that too and come back with, to you on the fifteenth, uh, to share my thoughts after I have a chance to really digest all that, all, everything that's there. Uh, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of commas, and, uh, also the federal ARPA, I believe, the American Recovery Act, uh, funds that were made available to yourself. That's new. That's a one-time thing. So I want to look at that and see where those are going to. But thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. I'll sit back and quietly listen as we chug along here, and, um, I'll look to learn more.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate your positive comments. Move into the new business. Item A, discussion of conservation easement for Etowah River Trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park Extension. Ms. Wilson, Watson, sorry. Ms. Wilson's over here. Ms. Watson's there.
Um, so on the project from Etowah River Trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park, there is a, a small area of stream buffer that is disturbed. So part of our variance procedures with EBD requires that we do mitigate that, um, area. So this is a conservation easement. Um, it is about point six-five acres adjacent to the Etowah River pedestrian bridge. Um, it's land that's not really, um, utilized by the trail projects or any of the parks. So we felt that that was the best area to use. The conservation easement basically just says that we can't develop it, can't put anything on it. You can use the hand tools, as we talked about earlier, but other than that, that's pretty much it, so.
So we're just kind of swapping that out?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. Any questions, comments? Sounds like a great solution to me. Thank you. Item B, discussion of proposed charter amendments. Mr. Dyer.
This is the, uh, beginning of the process that you all authorized to start. So this is the first meeting at which we'll consider the charter. Um, I put it into the ordinance form, otherwise it's what we discussed earlier. There were a couple of, um, sort of, as I read it again, things needed to be clarified a little bit. But everything is substantially what we've all talked about. So if you are inclined to do it, you need to approve it tonight. And then it'll come back again on the fifteenth for a second approval. So the statute requires that, not just that we read it twice, but that we approve it twice.
I did, just for the record, I, I had a, um, citizen contact me just to inquire or follow up on, um, some initial, uh, feedback, uh, suggesting term limits for mayor and council. And I, I did report back to him that we, that was discussed in our first meeting, uh, and input from that. And, and Mr. Dyer, I believe your, your take on that was that the, uh, citizens impose those when they felt necessary, but also there's, it is a legislative matter. But I did want to mention that, that that was discussed, considered. Any other feedback on that from the committee, Ms. McGrew? Am I reporting that correctly, so?
Yes.
And, and just remember, this is the, the set of things we can do on our own. We have another set that we will need to take it, some of them will need to take to legislator.
Definitely, definitely. But I just wanted to, to, for the record, to, to state that that was discussed and.
In case the, the person who asked about it is listening and wasn't at our meeting where we did discuss it, the, what it boiled down to was that there was little benefit to adding a term limit. Because there's no, there's no benefit to the council member for remaining with the council for multiple terms. Uh, there's no pension involved. There's no, um, there's no long-term benefit that you can acquire by being elected so many times or serving so many years. There's no, uh, no tenure, if you were.
Yes.
Now, I think that's where our conversation boiled down to, was there's no benefit to staying longer. Someone wants somebody to have a term limit, then they run and people vote.
Exactly.
That the term limits are.
I mean, and.
Unless you prefer gray hair earlier.
And if there, any citizens that, uh, think that's necessary, they're not limited to your doing it. They can go to the legislatures.
Correct.
Legislators, and they can do it unilaterally. They don't, uh, need our agreement.
Correct, correct.
They can change our charter that way? Interesting. Okay.
Yes. And I believe, I believe cities have, some cities have looked at that, and I believe legislator, if I'm not, I may be incorrect, but has not agreed to that, or I know there have been discussions about it.
Well, it did come up ten years ago, a, a long time ago. But, um, legislators, Cherokee County Legislative Delegation at that time required a unanimous.
Correct.
They wouldn't have considered it unless it was unanimous among the city councils. They wouldn't take it up, even though it passed by a majority.
Right. And that's still the case, I mean, today, that if.
I, I don't think they have any rules right now.
Right, right. Okay.
So you need a motion to approve the charter amendments as presented here tonight? Probably wasn't as eloquent as Ms. Schmidt, does it? I tried. So I would move for us to a- adopt the proposed charter amendments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion.
And, and just, so you also, one other point I forgot to mention, that this is being advertised. It was advertised last Thursday. It'll be, it was advertised again today, and it has one more ad to run on the eighth.
Okay, thank you.
So the two readings, um, basically, uh, meet public hearing requirements?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's two times you have to vote on it in public. So whether you have to, whether you want to schedule a public hearing is just up to you, as Mr. Weaver said. That's a, would be a voluntary thing on your part. It's not required.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, uh, invite any of our citizens to speak at public input or contact us if they have any issues on the charter. So charter changes as proposed and.
It's been on the agenda several times, so.
And we have this put out in our email blast?
Certainly. We'll do that. And item C, propose, uh, discussion of proposed ethics and conduct ordinance.
So this is also the exact same thing that we discussed last time. Uh, did make the changes that I had mentioned, which was take out the five-thousand-dollar, uh, definition. Uh, change it to the city clerk drawing, uh, the names of the panel and that, uh, the city manager and the city attorney would do a written waiver of any conflict where the, where it's a public bidding situation. So this will be on the agenda in two weeks for your approval.
Great. Mr. Dyer? So item D, discussion of fiscal year twenty-twenty-two municipal fee schedule? Okay. Ms. Reese, would you like to sing a song for us?
I'll do a motion for recess then while we wait.
Like to do a, like to do a five-minute, uh, intermission?
Intermission, yeah. For the second act.
Let's do that, so. Okay, let's pick back up here, so. We left off at item D, discussion of fiscal year twenty-twenty-two municipal fee schedule. Mr. Peppers?
You have a copy of the draft fee schedule, uh, in your packet. Um, I will quickly highlight the changes that are in here, uh, as proposed. I think Mr. Ingram mentioned these during our public, um, uh, budget work session, uh, last month. Uh, the first change in the fee schedule is on page eleven or section five. It changes the business license application fee or the admin fee from twenty-five dollars to thirty dollars. Uh, the staff discussion on that is that in most cases, there's multiple mailings, um, and those packages can get kind of large. And additionally, we've moved a lot, a lot of the, um, process to an online system, uh, where possible. And so that helps offset some of the online costs associated with the business license process. The second change is on page fourteen, and it's under the planning and zoning fees. It's a technology fee of ten dollars per application. Uh, this, this puts this fee in the fee schedule. Uh, it's something that the city had, uh, looked at. Um, and when we implemented our new software in community development, almost all of our projects now are submitting everything online in digital formats. And so while there's an additional ten-dollar fee on our side to help offset the cost of that software, for most projects, there's a reduction in costs, because they're not having to bring paper plant, print off the large paper plans, bring them into City Hall, pay permit runners to come in. Everything's handled electronically. The next section, uh, is section, uh, eleven, which starts on page thirty. Uh, this section, which is also highlighted on page thirty-one, uh, relates to changes in the water rates. If you recall, those rates, um, are, are required to change under our bond indenture for, um, our water pollution control plant. And so those rates are to escalate, um, uh, on an annual basis at a small percentage as opposed to large percentage at, uh, at certain types of the project. And then the last change that's, changes that are listed in here are on page thirty-three, uh, which are also under that particular section eleven on utility fees. Uh, the first one is on the sanitation rates. Uh, the standard curbside residential rate would go to eighteen dollars and fifty cents. The discounted senior rate would go to fifteen dollars. Uh, that is to offset, uh, rate increases that we have seen historically on our sanitation. Our current rate for sanitation for standard curbside is sixteen dollars and fifty cents. And just to give you some historical, back in two thousand four, we charged sixteen dollars. Uh, we went through a period of about three years where the rate, uh, was cut to about fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. It's been at sixteen dollars and fifty cents for a number of years now. Uh, but we're continuing to pay more on an annual basis for sanitation services. The discounted senior rate would go up to fifteen dollars. Uh, and then the last is the stormwater rate. Currently, we charge fifty cents per impervious unit. Uh, this would raise that rate to a dollar twenty-five per impervious unit. Uh, in the past, that had been as high as four dollars and twenty-five cents per impervious unit. And the city had accumulated a fund, a balance in the stormwater utility fee. We reduced that to fifty cents, uh, a number of years ago, uh, until we were able to deplete that existing, uh, reserve, which we have on specific stormwater projects. It's now time that we raise the rate a little bit based on our annual projects and the work that we need to complete on stormwater. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I know we'll, Mr. Garland added the, uh, sanitation rates and, and committee report to discuss, uh, later, but, uh, any other questions on, discussion on the proposed fee schedule? Okay. Moving right along, discussion of referendum for distilled spirit package sales within the city of Canton. Mr. Peppers?
Uh, during this legislative session, a bill was introduced, uh, uh, and carried, um, uh, in the House by, uh, Representative Mandy Ballinger, uh, that would allow for cities, uh, to call for referendum on, uh, distilled package sales within the municipality. Uh, that re, uh, that bill was approved by both the House and the Senate and subsequently signed into law by the governor's office. Prior to that, the only way to get that on the ballot would have been a petition process by a percentage of voters, uh, within the city. Uh, it was determined that, uh, cities should have both options. One, just to call for referendum or to have the petition process, which is what the law, the new law outlines. Um, and we just wanted to put on here, um, uh, that general discussion. Is this something that you want to see, uh, brought back to you in the form of a call for a referendum? Uh, we have time. We can put it on a referendum in November of this year with our general election. Uh, we would probably bring this to you in August for the call. Or you could call it at the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes, yes, please.
Next meeting, please. Unless we could do it tonight?
I, I have a different, I have a question that's similar and related, but, yeah, I agree, next meeting.
So the other part of that equation is, do you want to go ahead and get the ordinance changes in place that allow for packaged sales of distilled spirits in the, in the city prior to the referendum? So that post-referendum, it's already in place and we don't have to sit down and change anything in our codes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Obviously, yeah.
Well, and we, we, that would be discussing, like, how many, size, and, I mean, we need to have that discussion. So that when citizens do go to vote, they know actually what they are approving. I mean.
That is correct. And it's not as time-sensitive as the call for the election, so to speak.
Ms. Justice?
So then, um, would it, if it was approved on that, um, the election, the general election, would it be in effect immediately or to be January first? What's?
So what, what I would say is, it could become effective as soon as the election is certified.
Certified, right.
As long as we have the ability in our code to allow them. So we would want to do, that's the reason why I asked, do you want to fix it ahead of time? The other route would be, let's wait for the referendum, see what the voters want to approve, and have it start effective January first.
And then the, um, in that ordinance, would it also state what the new fee would be? Because going back to the fee, we don't have a fee for packaged sales.
So what we would do is when we approve the ordinance, we would simultaneously approve adding that fee to the city's fee schedule.
Got it, okay.
Um, and then, you know, I mean, from a, from a timing standpoint, you know, if the election is first, you know, at, at the first of November, you've got to wait for the certification of the election, so you're probably a couple of weeks off on that. Any individual who's going to do distilled package sales is going to have to go through an application process. They're going to have to get things set up with a state. You're not likely to have anybody eligible before January first, but that would be on their side to get worked out, not necessarily on the city's side if we can get everything changed in our ordinance ahead of time.
But I think if we were able to kind of debate, discuss what the parameters are, it would help people who are considering, you know, so if there was a person who wanted the, a, a tiny shop, you know, we go, oh, actually, we're going to make them big, you know, then we, they know what to, what to course correct. Um, and then I guess it would be helpful too to just, I mean, I know there's a lot of, um, citizens that are resounding yes, but I don't know if we know what we're yes to. You know, what, what are the, the menu of options that we need to consider? Um, you know, size is one that I know we've loosely kind of bounced around, but anything else that we need to consider would be good to tee up for a upcoming discussion for an ordinance.
I think, you know, the call for referendum is the first step, and that's the easy part. And then deciding what, you know, the actually voters are going to be approving or, or not is the, you know, the, the details of, you know. And then deciding what, you know, the actually voters are going to be approving or, or not is the, you know, the, the details of, you know, number, we would allow, sizes, locations, I mean, there are a lot, I mean, uh, that will require some discussion and thought, I think so.
Would you want to enact the alcohol committee to bring forward some ideas?
Thinking, thinking like that, I think so.
And alcohol committee.
If I make sure I understand it right, the referendum is just an up or down on whether or not you can sell? And then what our ordinance would be, would be subject to just how we pass any other ordinance. It's on an agenda, people can come in and speak if they want, you know, during 10 minute public input, send us emails, whatever it is. But we wouldn't necessarily have to have, that, we would not necessarily locked in to what it is we're trying to pass in the ordinance in the referendum, the referendum's just an up or down?
That's correct.
Okay, absolutely. And I was going to suggest we're doing an ordinance change, you know, I know we work out, kind of piggyback on the charter and going through our ordinances as well. If this is an opportunity to do that, it sounds like the alcohol committee may be the right place for this also. Either of those two. Or whatever Mr. Estes just said.
I see.
How do we want to do it?
Yeah. Well, we definitely want to, uh, if you could bring back the, the call for the next meeting and then we will, uh, discuss how to, uh, you know, immediately begin discussing the, the ordinance so we can get that in place. So again, the voters can vote up or down, but at least they can have a better idea of what they're, what they are approving. So I think that's important, so. And just to clarify, I mean, is, would it just be as simple as they're voting to approve package sales in the city? Okay. Okay, cool. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I M F, discussion of convenience stores, Ms. McGrew.
Thank you, as I brought forward, uh, two weeks ago, I'd been noticing the numerous, uh, applications for convenience stores coming to the city and the number of convenience stores that we already have. And wondering if it's time to think about our roadmap and how the convenience stores, uh, play into our roadmap in our exceptional neighborhoods? And would we like to think about a distance requirement from each other? So as we don't saturate four corners at an intersection with convenience stores or saturate an area with convenience stores only, um, you get into the same issue with nail salons and oil change and all these kind of things kind of cluster together. But with the traffic going into a convenience store, uh, trucks maybe going in to get gas, it, it's a conversation I thought we might want to have. And there are lots of different points to cover. It could be a big conversation, it could be, um, a small conversation. No one has an appetite to pursue this, that's fine, I just thought that I should bring it forward, see who's, um, interested in a conversation. Mr., uh, Patton sent us Clarkston's 12-page, very wordy ordinance. And, uh, plowing through that was, um, an Olympic feat. So, um, College Park has an ordinance much like ours, which just talk about variance, overhangs, products for sale, loitering, gambling on, on site, uh, drug paraphernalia being sold. So where do we want to go from here?
I know, I know in the last meeting we did, uh, enact a 30-day moratorium, was it correct?
End of July.
End of July, okay, yes, correct. So, um, I think it should just allow us time to, to discuss it. And we, we said we would discuss it further tonight. I guess the first step would be to kind of get the general senses of, I guess, where council stands? Or, uh, do, I mean, I think there were some, you know, discussion, uh, at the last, uh, meeting about, you know, some different viewpoints, uh, you know, is it? I, I could, the distance, you know, requirement, I think is probably the most simple thing, you know? I think, uh, that, uh, when you get into more like regulating products and then things, I think that's a lot more complicated.
You can't do that.
Right, so, um.
Except for drug paraphernalia, we can regulate that.
So, um, I think as a matter, I guess it's what, you know, scope are we talking about? Are we talking something, something simple or are we talking about something, you know, more extensive? So, uh, but I guess now's the time for people to speak up, stresses.
Yeah, I kind of alluded to this last time, but you know, kind of my, I tend to be more, you know, free enterprise about it. You know, let's let the market determine what, um, what makes sense, um, what their interpretation is, um, of, of what the needs are. Uh, you know, I think about, you know, there's always a quick trip and a racetrack across from each other, a Home Depot and a Lowe's, you know, there's, um, there's, there's reasons, you know, there's, there's, uh, con- convenience reasons. And then of course, there's smarter people than me, you know, in these corporate offices that are investigating that. And so I think that, you know, they're, I, I look sometimes to them, I don't know if that's a naive, but I, I tend to look to them to say, if you think you can be successful being right on top of your, your neighbor and, uh, they happen to have the same products and services as you, then, you know, good luck. Um, I know we want to prevent, you know, having, you know, a shell that, that fails. But I don't know, that's where I always get into, where does government kind of play its role of, kind of determining that, so.
I, and, and I agree with, with, you know, the basic premise of that. I had a conversation, it may have been with Ms. McGrew, it may have been someone else, it may have been with myself, but wondering about if, if the real concern was, you know, just appearance and, you know, the, the city's, you know, beautification of the city or, or lack thereof. Would another possible angle, angle, and Mr. Patton may be better to answer this, would be, you know, more stringent development standards for, uh, you know, convenience stores, filling stations that would, you know, discourage the more, you know, less attractive ones. And I could be, I think I'd be more willing to, uh, consider something like that because it's not saying, well, you just can't do that, you know, in our city. But if you do it, let's do it right, let's do quality, you know, you know, we always say quality over quantity. But could we do that? And, and, and I could see something like that maybe combined with a, you know, a basic, you know, distance possibly. I know we do have, you know, other people looking at, you know, other convenience stores and filling stations on, you know, Riverstone right now, so. I do understand the issue and, I mean, I don't, I don't think necessarily we want Riverstone to become a, you know, you know, gas stores way, but, but I, but I, I would prefer, you know, I think if we could do that, if that seems to be logical, you know, more stringent development standards for those, that we can make sure if they do do them, they're going to look correctly, you know, look nice, and then it would dis, you know, I think it maybe discourages the ones that don't want to go to that standard to, to not do those, but I'm not sure.
Um, I, that's basically what I was going to say. At first, I, you know, felt like, yeah, that's a really good idea. But then I'd also like to have distance requirements for vape shops. And, I mean, there's a lot of other stuff we als, I also don't want to see all over town. So I was thinking about places like Milton and Peachtree City to Mayor Grant's point. You can't tell you're driving by a convenience store or a gas station. And I think that is the issue, like, let's have brick columns and let's make sure that it doesn't look like junk. And I think that is the real issue, okay, turns out. So not that I'm that excited about agreeing with Mr. Estes.
And I don't disagree at all, this is a conversation.
Yeah, it is a good conversation. Ms. Wilson?
Um, my question may, may address what we're all talking about. Does our current ordinance talk about covering the windows in convenience stores?
I think that would be a signage ordinance.
Right, right. So, so what you were talking about making it attractive, I'm interested in being able to see into one of these, one of these stores before I go in. Down on Marietta Highway, I was looking today at some of the convenience stores there. You cannot see inside until you get in because they're covered with signs. So how do we know what kind of activities going on in there?
That would, uh, be an amendment to our sign regulations. Specifically as it relates to a window signage. Uh, the current regulations specify a maximum of 30, uh, percent of, uh, windows, uh, can be, uh, have signage, uh, because, uh, it's not specific to a, if you will, a pane of a window. You have a convenience store that has, uh, for instance, uh, one of the ones that's on the corner of, uh, Riverstone, Waleska Street, Waleska Road.
Right.
All of the panes facing Riverstone are covered with signage.
They are.
Uh, but if, uh, you look on the other, uh, two sides, part of, uh, those window panes are open and do not have signage. And our code enforcement, uh, people with that particular, uh, convenience store, the way the regulations are written, they looked at the total amount of, uh, glass window panes and, uh, the signage was under the 30% uh, uh, standard that's in the sign regulations. You could either reduce, uh, the percentage of, uh, uh, allowable signage in the windows or you could change the language to, uh, address individual, uh, panes of windows, uh, to, uh, make, uh, that type of a change.
Right, it looks like we need to look at that sign ordinance and maybe update that because you're right. When I drive by, I can't see in, but I didn't go in and drive around. And so I'm sure code enforcement has an issue with, you know, 30% is open or 30%, only 30% is covered. So, you know, that was, that's one of the issues that I had with some of the convenience stores that, that I was looking at today. I don't know what's going on in there, so as a, as a customer, I don't think I want to go in if I don't know what's going on.
May I make a suggestion that might, might help with this? You know, with our ongoing Blight and Code Compliance Committee discussions? Maybe that's something that we should address and bring before council as a large, as part of a larger report. Make some suggestions, as Mr. Patton said, to more tightly couple what the requirements would be overall for the convenience stores to, to make it more, uh, a more safe environment.
For signage?
Another option for consideration is, uh, as, uh, new convenience stores are proposed to come in, council could certainly require that, uh, convenience stores go through a conditional use permit approval process. And part of that approval process allows city council to look at that particular location, what's in the neighborhood, traffic patterns, things of that nature, what, uh, the staff is seeing. What we've had, uh, conversations with people about is, uh, conversions of existing retail spaces that were other uses. Basically, there are two restaurants, uh, along, uh, uh, the Riverstone corridor than process of, uh, being converted, uh, for convenience stores. With, uh, fuel pumps.
A we, yeah, that was, uh, CUP for convenience stores was brought up in March, so I think that's definitely a possibility.
There is, um, applications submitted for a convenience store on the corner of Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive. And it's zoned, uh, general commercial or mixed use. But that's really a residential area. We've got townhomes and apartments and we're going to have rental cottages. So I want us to think about that and requiring, um, something more in the way they look, the way they're, uh, operate, well, not operate, but the way they look so that they blend into the community and so they're not an eyesore for residential area.
That's, uh, uh, excuse me, application has already been submitted?
Has it been submitted?
No, no application has been submitted, but that particular piece of property, uh, uh, originally, uh, before my time with the city, uh, was approved for a mixture of residential uses and commercial uses. There was amendments that were made to that particular part of, uh, the Riverstone Master Plan Development in which, uh, the southern portion of, uh, that, uh, parcel of land, uh, did allow for, I forget, uh, 200 and something thousand square feet of retail office with a similar square footage of residential above office retail within that portion. The apartments are at the very northern, uh, end of this parcel of land. Uh, there was an original proposal for some, uh, single-family homes or, uh, some attached homes to be in the middle. But, uh, uh, the parcel that is the corner of Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive, uh, does reflect approval for commercial office. And, uh, a convenience store meets the requirements for commercial uses.
We, we enacted the moratorium and if it hasn't, if it ha, if they have not applied for that, then, I mean, obviously anything that anyone has applied for it, these regulations would not, uh, apply to them.
And that would be something I have to give with the attorney on because those, uh, folks, uh, have been to our DRT meetings twice. Uh, they have incurred some engineering cost in, uh, regards to conceptual site plans, that sort of thing. Uh, so, uh, you know, they have incurred some costs that, uh, I'm not sure that I could say, no, you can't, uh, move forward. I don't know if those folks have actually purchased the property yet or not, but they have incurred some cost and they've been to the city twice.
They're in the pipeline.
Again, that would be up to Mr. Darby, I mean, appears to me like that is in process, but.
Well, the moratorium wasn't getting any permits, but yeah, vested rights is, involves people who have expended money in reliance on, uh, it being permitted, so.
Right.
It's going to be a case, it's just case by case.
Right.
Buying the property doesn't, that's not, that doesn't count.
Okay, so we'll be able to look at that. So let me ask you this on the CUP. I know for multifamily, we had, you know, some master plan developments that included, you know, multifamily before. You know, we had some issues because they were, you know, allowed before. Would we be in that, this, you know, this property, for instance, if this was not in process, would we have a issue with those, like, I mean, because there's probably a lot of property throughout the city where they are allowed, but.
No, we wouldn't have the same, because that's.
So we wouldn't have the same thing with the CUP?
Because it's, those were, uh, specifically multifamily specific.
Okay.
This is just loud and G C, I mean, so.
Okay.
They would, every, if that was true, everybody would have, be able to make that claim.
Okay.
So I don't, I, I, no, it'd be less of an issue.
Okay. And then Mr. Patton, do you think that in a, like, in addition to a CUP, do you think more stringent development standards is a viable option to consider or discuss as well, or?
Yes, sir, uh, you can, uh, uh, address things such as, uh, the canopies and canopy setbacks, uh, the underground, uh, uh, tanks, uh, in their proximity, uh, to existing roads and rights away, that sort of thing. That's some of the things that were contained within, uh, the Clarkston ordinance, uh, that I emailed, uh, out. Uh, the, uh, one that, uh, has, uh, got the plan submitted for the conversion, uh, they're on Marietta Highway, uh, part of their underground tank's going to be right at the driveway entrance, almost at, uh, the G Dot right of way. Uh, we did, uh, contact, uh, G Dot in regards to. We did contact GDOT in regards to that location for the underground tank and GDOT didn't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlin?
Just weigh in since everybody else is.
Please do.
I don't want to agree with Mr. Estes either, but I think I'm gonna have to a little bit. Which I think really means that he's agreeing with us.
Go buy a lottery ticket.
Really think he's agreeing with all of us at this point. The distance requirement, because we're, I still, I've thought about it since our last meeting. I can't get around to thinking that that's our solution. Because I think that if they've looked at it and said, we think this is viable across the street or down the street, it's kind of a business decision that I would defer to the, the business on. Also, I think that's good for customers usually having some gas wars from time to time. I do think we need to fix our sign ordinance. We can certainly take that up in a committee or discuss it or whatever we need to do to take care of it or through the Blight Committee, which I think would alleviate some of that issue. And I was gonna suggest CUP for this as well. My only concern was, and I think you've answered it, if, if a current zoning, if a property is currently zoned to allow a convenience store and we say from the day we vote forward, it has to go through the CUP process, that property, even though it was zoned before the CUP process, it can still, it still has to come through CUP? Is that correct?
What we're worried about in those situations is it's a take.
Right.
So, think about the multifamily. We said you can do multifamily and we took that away.
Right.
So, in this case, they would have the whole list of general commercial uses. So, they would have to prove that that was the only use they could have done with their property.
Sure.
And which is, okay.
And in the case of planned development in which a property is shown for commercial, some of our existing planned development mixed use projects have specific listings and the conditions of approval of what's allowed, what's not allowed. Some of them do not, but with the amendment in regards to the multifamily and the apartments, when that CUP was put in place, there was language that was added into the ordinance that basically covered the planned developments and put everyone on notice that for these uses, even though you're planned development commercial, you still have to go through this additional conditional use permit process.
Makes sense. We'll note that we were recently over in, I guess, Munro that had a, that had a, an old gas, an old style gas station, what I think Ms. McGrew probably means when she says eyesore. And across the street from it was a newer, more architecturally attractive design with the columns and the monument out front. It looked more like what we think about as a good looking convenience store gas station. And the gas station that had been across the street that had the old style had been converted into a restaurant. You know, it was still useful in some way, but it wasn't going, it wasn't gonna compete with the one that looked nice on the other side of the road. It was more updated, so I certainly like that idea of our design requirements to require that going forward and grow up a little bit as we, as we go.
I think, you know, I think quality development is, you know, important regardless of use. But I think especially in this, and it'd be good to have that opinion from community development. I also think that it would be good if we enacted the CUP process. It would give, have our citizens have a chance to, to speak out and that's because one developer said, well, this neighborhood wants these services, they want these conveniences and they want a, you know, a nail salon here so they won't have to drive across town. Well, that would give, you know, that neighborhood, I, I think, I thought differently, but it would give the neighborhood and citizens in that neighborhood a chance to, you know, say, well, that, we do want it there or, you know. But I think that would be another good thing. We may not like them, but it'd be, be nice to know if our citizens like them, so, but, or they want one there, so. But I like, I like that idea, but I also like, you know, tightening up the, the development standards too. And then maybe could we, could we ask Ken, you and your department, maybe some, some of the basic modifications or standards to the, tighten those up that we should consider or think about?
We can work on some things. I can leave word for staff. I'm gonna be out of the office tomorrow and all, next week, won't be back till the 12th. So, timeframe, I can ask the staff to work on some things. The city attorney might have time that he could work on a few things.
We would have to extend the moratorium.
Right, right.
Give ourselves some time on that. We're not doing it in a lie.
Right, right. I, I think we anticipated that, but.
So, I, I, just food for thought. Conditional use permit process for convenience stores, I think is a little problematic. If, if you're gonna, if all you're really trying to do is control what they look like, just put in the rules for what they look like. And then you don't, because conditional use, you're saying, eh, we don't like that one there and we do like this one here. When you could do that sort of objectively, we don't really care where it goes as long as it looks like this. And you could say, if you're within this many feet of a residential, you can only have this many pumps. Or, I mean, I don't know what it could be, but rather than just broadly saying, you gotta come get our permission to be a convenience store. Unless that's exactly what you want to do, you really don't want them, and so you're gonna have to come convince you that, to let them, let them be there. But if we spend our effort and time thinking of what we want them to look like, which is what I sort of hear you saying, if it's the number of them, then that's a different story. We gotta figure out a way to reduce the number of them. So, that sort of needs to be decided, but it's sort of easy to say, let's just make it all a conditional use and make them come ask for permission, but the law's gonna require us to have some standards to apply to that. And, and we would have to figure out what those standards would be.
So, you've changed mine.
Yeah, I mean, we already have conditional use standards, but they're very broad. I mean, their impact on the neighborhood and so forth. And, I mean, what's interesting is what you're describing is contrary to neighborhood commercial. Service stations are allowed in neighborhood commercial because the idea is they want to be close to inconvenient to the people. So, it's sort of figuring that part out.
I mean, I just think it goes back to what it looks like. Because I know that River Green would be thrilled if the old Page &amp; Sons site was a gas station and convenience store again, but they want it to look like it matches the neighborhood.
Think about the ones that have come in new in the last twenty years even. I mean, you got the one at Ridge Road, which is perfectly, you know, it's got the brick and all that, and the QuickTrip. You know, Race Track was before we really put in, I mean, and QuickTrip had to come get variances. So, we already have a lot of overlay and other requirements that make them look a certain way. So, we could tighten those up a little bit, but I mean, you know, what is it you're really worried about? Lighting? The number of pumps? I mean, do you want, you want them to be big? You want them to be small? I mean, that's, that's what you gotta think through. So, we're gonna have to take some time on that.
Well, I think if we're gonna be super honest and transparent, a lot of the problem is older current stations and what they look like.
Which we cannot do anything about. Even if we change it, they'll be grandfathered in.
If we're gonna be honest about what the problem is.
Well, what, and so what you do is you put these standards on convenience stores in particular, not just general overlay that everybody's gotta look this way. We figure out, and then over time, you hope, you know, because if, then if, if they make substantial renovations, it triggers the new rules for, for them. So, you hope over time it happens or, or they get, you know, squashed by the bigger ones that are. I mean, the, the industry is to have two or three acres. I mean, QuickTrip and Race Track, that's the industry. And that's what, what, what they want to be. They want to be big. They're, they're food places. They're, I mean, they're restaurants. They're, they're multi-use. So, if we control how they look, control the height of the canopies, you do the, think about Hilton Head, you know? You don't even know where it got, can't find the gas station because they're, they're so tight on the way they, they look up there, so.
And even though we couldn't do anything for the existing ones, if we do change the standards, if, if one, I mean, transitioned to, or sold or became different, would, they would have to adhere to the new ones?
Not, not just by a sale, because they would be legal non-conforming use. But, but if they came in and made any kind of renovations, it's driven by dollar fifty percent usually. There's, there's non-conforming use rules that, that if you make more than fifty percent of the value improvements, you, you now kick into the new rules. You lose your non-conforming status. So, the, the bigger problem is when they stop being a convenience store and they become something else.
Well, I think our moratorium was for, with filling stations or, I mean, I forget how we worded that, but.
I just wanted you to think through that conditional use. That may be the solution and may be what y'all want to do and that's fine, but let's, let's think about that and.
Could you guys think about some guidelines or standards? Obviously, at the next meeting, we can consider whether to extend the moratorium or? But, I mean, we, we're not asking to solve this by the end of July, but.
In the next meeting was really just, are we gonna go forward with something so we can extend the moratorium?
Does everyone like the idea of at least looking at development standards as a place to start?
But we would, we'll come with an extension of the moratorium on the 15th.
Okay, a new ordinance, right?
In addition to that, I mean, the problem is we're talking about new stations and new, and stations that are going to renovate to a certain point that would then have to comply for the existing stations. We're looking at the sign ordinance. Are there, while we're talking about all this, are there other ordinances to try to help clean those up? Off the top of my head, I don't know, but between now and two weeks from now, maybe we can think of. The sign ordinance seems to be the easy one after that.
Maybe some games, some rules about gaming.
I mean, I know there's signs.
We already have that, I think.
One-armed bandit things where, you know.
Slot machine bro.
Yeah. I know, piggybacking on what Nick said, remember when we read Good to Great? And Walgreens found out that if they built a drugstore right across the street from CVS, they were gonna get that traffic. So, I don't want to, like you said, I, I think the market will tell us, will tell the owner or the, the developer where they, where they'll make money if they go. But I do think we need to look at some of the ones that are already here and maybe some of the ones that are coming in so that we don't have the problem of not being able to see in or people having, selling drugs inside. I've heard, you know, since we brought, since you brought this up, I've had a call from, some people said, you know, they're selling drugs at such and such a convenience store. They have one-armed bandits in there that you can go in and gamble. So, we need to look at all that.
I play. Just make sure all the new ones have rural food too, so.
Talking about, talking about ordinances that can impact this, Ms. McGroom mentioned it and we've talked about it before, but, and I've talked about it with staff before, our landscape requirements or ordinance or whatever, it's not very robust for commercial. So, if your mulch hasn't been replaced in two years or your, the black liner underneath your pine straw beds is showing, you know, it just looks unkempt. Our most residences aren't allowed to look that way, but there's not really something impactful for those commercial properties to have to maintain landscape standards, which applies probably to some of the properties we're talking about. Sure.
Look at those as well, so. I mean, ordinances in general, I know we have, the plan is just, we have a lot of ordinances that need to be reviewed and we, we can talk about that going forward. I know, I know we're getting into a lengthy meeting tonight, but my thought on that is likely we should look at all, you know, that we think need to be reviewed and then kind of prioritize like what we think are the most critical ones to do first and then maybe batch process those in some manner. So, but we can talk about that and I think that'll be some good committee work, so, for us, tedious committee work, so. Okay, let's move forward. Item G, discussion of proclamation policy. I mentioned this at the last meeting. Ms. Stanton, Stanton mentioned that, I think that there was an existing proclamation policy. I thought I'd seen one somewhere in the past. Mr. Peppers actually found a policy binder that Ms. Stewart had put together a couple of years ago and lo and behold, there is one, so. So, y'all have, have a copy of this. We also been working with the city attorney. Woodstock has a very, had some very similar issues. And I won't call them issues, but it's just, you know, we get a lot of quest for policy, for proclamations. And again, they're all can be wonderful causes, but I think that in general intent for, for proclamations are for, you know, for city residents, city organizations, city businesses, but something that is really, you know, positive, something very positive for the city. So, they're, you know, national and local, regional causes, but I think the main intent is, is something that is, you know, contained within the city. So, these are some general guidelines. I just wanted to kind of make everyone aware of these and have it, take a look at that. And I think it's very similar to, I think Woodstock goes a little bit further in kind of cleaning up some of the definitions. Like, well, what is, you know, you know, city? And so we, we maybe could look at those. And so, if you look at these and just have some, you know, recommendations of what you think would tighten this up a bit or whatever, and we could maybe send up a Woodstock one also, but we'll have, we can work with Mr. Dyar to, to tighten this up and bring something back that we can look at to, to formally adopt going forward. And the tenet here is, is not to, you know, deny anyone, but when someone comes to us and it's clearly not, maybe a great cause, but again, it's, it's something that's, you know, a state or a national thing that is, you know, is great, but it's not necessarily something that's within, you know, canton. They would kind of say, we, we support you, but, you know, we, we don't do proclamations for things of that nature, so. I think Woodstock comment is that they had a similar situation a couple of years ago and when they did enact the policy, it really helped them on that and they really didn't have. Once they gave the policy, the people are like, oh, thank you. I understand, so, but that's the intent, I'd say. Do you have a question or you? You're saying stop talking, so, okay. Can't tell if that was your hold, hold of thought or? You told me to hold my thoughts, I think, so, okay. Mr. Pepper, should I report? No, no, we have two items we added, so. Item H, the Atkins, Mr. Tabin, would you explain that, please? I wrote down Atkins wastewater treatment plant, so can you fill in the gaps for us, please?
On sooner. I wasn't sure if I was gonna have all my documentation and backup in time. But basically what we're doing is we asked Atkins and Clark Reeves Young to give us a cost to expand the plant to seven MGD now as opposed to in the future. We do have the ability to do that now. And I think it's a much more cost-effective way to do it. I think Atkins' cost, it was essentially for resident project inspection and because there's gonna be a little bit of time extension. I think it was about six weeks is what the contractor said. And in the, in the grand scheme of things, it's still a lot of money, but compared to the price of the, the plant, it's, it's, it's small potatoes. But Atkins' portion was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And, and I don't know if I'm bleeding one item into the other. Contractor was, contractor was for about 1.85 million. And that's for one million gallons a day of additional capacity. To put it in perspective, that's, you know, even with engineering, that's less than two dollars a gallon. The original bid was a little over ten dollars a gallon. And to further put it in perspective, aggressive growth is about a hundred thousand gallons per day, per year of added capacity. So, a million gallons is, is like ten years' worth of growth. Anyway, we're looking to, we'll bring it forward next meeting. The 1.8 is still being tweaked. We just got the numbers and Atkins is, is looking at those as well, seeing if they're, match up with everything.
But that would be the total cost for design, engineering and additional construction?
The 1.8, I think it was 1.85, was the contractor's cost and a hundred and two thousand dollars was Atkins' cost. The 1.8, I think it was 1.85, was the contractor's cost, and 102,000 dollars was Atkins' cost.
Atkins, right, correct, okay. Yeah, and just to remind, we were approved up to 7 million gallons per day.
Yes, we already have permits in place for 6 MGD and 7 MGD.
So the premises is while equipment's on site, you know, to go ahead and, 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 uh, do the capacity up to 7 million gallons per day.
And if, if you've been out there lately, there's an awful lot of stuff going on, and, uh, you don't wanna have to come back and, and dig into that, so it just seems to make the most sense.
Makes sense to me, and we can, I guess when you bring back the formal, uh, documents, we can discuss, but certainly makes sense to me.
Any questions? I know everyone wants to go home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Dave. I'm in favor.
Oh, okay. I think now, Mr. Pepper? No? What?
I don't have anything.
Oh, you don't have anything? I thought you were telling me I missed something else, I was like, God, thank you guys for being patient with me tonight. It's been a long day, so, um. Mr. Carlin, council introduce items to discuss.
I'll be very brief. Uh, earlier this, our sanitation committee that was started back in late May, um, we've met three times, we've, uh, heard from residents, we've heard from, our last meeting earlier this week, we heard from the, um, advanced disposal waste management folks. We talked a lot about the issues that our residents were facing, we talked a lot about future costs that were coming up, and as we've all talked about here, and we talked about earlier tonight, the, the increased cost has not been passed on to the residents for some time, for better part of 10 years. And we've reached a point now where we're getting upside down in what we're being charged by advanced disposal and waste management, and what we are bringing in from sanitation customers. At our last meeting, we had a discussion about this, and Mr. Mayor, you asked for the sanitation committee to look in it, come back with a recommendation. We met earlier this week, um, and voted to recommend out that we adopt the proposal of the increase as it is in the proposed budget. The thought being to incrementalize the expected increases, and talking to waste management and advanced disposal, they, you know, in 2019, they were already close to $20, and they gave us very little faith that that would be, it would be any lower than that going forward, and likely higher with the additional charge for recycling. Just a note here, something interesting from them, just a few years ago, they were paying, they were getting a $5 rebate on every ton of recycling that they brought in. Now they pay $75. It's an $80 swing in a couple of, um, couple of years, so that's problematic and certainly being passed on to us, and a small increase as proposed in the budget, I think would be appropriate. Uh, I will note that, uh, stress, you, two, two weeks ago, you had thoughts on this, and I know I didn't make our meeting this past time, but I wanna make sure you gave you an opportunity to say something about that, if that's.
No, thank you.
That's why I wanna make sure it was here.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, my, my concerns before were, you know, I think to put it in front of the, you know, the, the broader audience and citizens, you know, we do recognize that it's gonna go up, um, and, you know, we do have a lot of ARPA funding coming in, you know, and we know that we can use ARPA for this, um, and so, um, I tend to look at it again, I'd rather have my money in my pocket as a, as a citizen today rather than letting the government kind of hold on to it and hope that they will do good things with it. And I kind of look at, at this as that, like, I know that in two years, we're probably gonna increase our rates, but if I got found money from ARPA, and then, and it can be applied, you know, how does it help mitigate some of the costs today? And then, you know, through public input, we'll continue to structure the right deal and, and, uh, we'll have a second run at. I feel like we, we did have a lot of transparency in the last negotiation, and, and, uh, and then when the change happened to advanced disposal, everyone was like, where was I? You know, and so, so again, we'll go through that, and we'll try to take lessons learned from, um, from, from that negotiation and potential transition there. Um, but that, that's just my feedback. I'd love to get other people's feedback, you know, from the community on there, knowing that it's gonna go up most likely. Um, to what extent, I don't know, so would you rather us prep you for that, or would you rather us potentially go down to go up and?
Right. I, I, and I was happy to see that, you know, uh, some of the homeowners, uh, present, association presidents were involved, 'cause I do think, you know, to, to, to get their input, uh, but more importantly, the citizens' input, uh, they represent those sometimes better than others, but, uh, I did just informally ask several citizens, uh, kind of across the board, I mean, I discussed it, and, and, uh, no one expressed big alarm about the amount we were talking about. And it also, you know, was it the principle, 'cause, you know, my fundamental brilliance principle is when you're having, you know, significant surface issues and to raise the rates, I mean, it's just a, I have a problem with that, but even though we don't control the services, but I know that we're trying to address that with them as well. Uh, I know that we have another year with them, um, and we will, I certainly hope we will be going out for RFP, just because I think we need to do our due diligence there. Um, I think we all know that, that the, the cost will increase, um, and I think if we, you know, continue to be transparent about it, and our citizens are part of that process, you know, they understand what we're paying for, and, you know, we can make sure that they're aware of the options, you know, that, that, you know, you, if you wanna, if you wanna privatize it, you know, this is what it's gonna do, and, and, they are, were some discussions, you know, some options last time that we, and we, you know, this was the best option at that time, so, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a much more complicated process, uh, I think, you know, we kinda have to, you know, eat the elephant one, one bite at a time. Ms., Ms. Wilson?
Remind me, uh, when waste management's contract is up?
Uh, we extended it for one more year, so it, it goes through.
September of 22. September 2022? Okay, and then at that time, we will go out to bid, right? Or before then, we'll have to go out to bid for a, for another.
Yeah, we would, we would probably go out to bid as early as, um.
Yeah, I, it, the, the date doesn't bother me. I'm just making the point that we will have to bid out a contract.
We would, and we'll, we'll likely do that in the winter because we'll have time, should we select another vendor to talk about the transition process.
Right, well, knowing what we went through last time, I think the, the very small upgrade that the committee has recommended is certainly what, what it should be.
To the, to that point, we, and to go back to something you mentioned, Mayor, about the service issues, the, uh, I had Mr. Peppers there, Ms. Forner was there, Ms. Schmidt had joined the call, Ms. McGrew. It was an uncomfortable conversation. I mean, it was a, that we put questions to them, why is this happening on this day? You said this wasn't gonna happen anymore, and then on this day it happened again. What are we doing to fix that? And push through to say, what changes are you making internally to your business to make sure that our citizens are protected and our residents are protected? And, um, they were receptive to that, they gave, they are making changes internally, then hopefully will alleviate some of these problems, um, going forward, but it's just that continued conversation. The committee will continue to work. Our next scheduled meeting, we're gonna talk about, when it gets scheduled, we'll be hearing more from residents. We'll also have reached out to some of the property management associations to hear more concerns, and get an idea of what to do as far as private streets as well. So I suspect we'll have a final report a little bit later this year, but, uh, wanted to give you this interim report since you asked for it two weeks ago.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the committee's work and the perspectives, um, and the recommendation. Uh, I imagine that the entire council, I, I guess we can vote on this at our next meeting? Is that?
It's just adopting it.
I guess we just adopt it with, with the budget, so. But I do, uh, do appreciate the input. Uh, I also would like to, you know, recommend that the committee considers, you know, as we move forward, that we consider, you know, at least one or two maybe town halls just on sanitation, just 'cause it's just, again, it's, it's something our citizens deal with every week. The conversations have gotten uncomfortable with waste management, and they should be, so, uh, I've had several uncomfortable conversations with them this week. Citywide, but also my, uh, my, my personal trash has not been picked up for two weeks again, so. And my, uh, commercial, uh, account has been messed up, so, for two months in a row, but, you know, it's, it's.
We'll try to address that specifically next week.
So I have firsthand experience of what our citizens are dealing with, and we know it's a pain point, and, uh, and we're on it, so we'll, we'll continue to be on it, so it's, it's, it's an issue and it's a problem, so I appreciate the work on it, so.
Glad to do it.
Um, I have no report, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate and litigation.
Second. Motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn? Thank you, everyone.
Break.
We'll take a five-minute break before we go into executive session.